Good morning. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is December 10th and it is 10:00 a.m. And I'd also like to thank the staff for making it so festive in our chambers and for asking the kids to come out and sing to the community today in the atrium. So we'll start with a salute to the flag. And I see that Dr. Johnson from the Political Science School at UNR is here. And so if he could please lead us in the salute to the flag.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. If you'll call the roll, please.
Of course. Chair Hill.
Here.
Vice Chair Herman. Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Andreaola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Chief Deputy District Attorney Mary Kanderas.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into public comment. Manager Brown.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole. Virtual public comment eligible when facilities are available. Public comment is welcomed during public comment periods and is limited to three minutes per person per public comment period. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. A speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however. Reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. All comments are redirected to the commission as a whole. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The president, the presiding officer, may order a person to be removed if the person conduct, a person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain descriptions of a public meeting are criminal acts as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 20203.119, which may result in prosecution in inappropriate cases.
Thank you very much, Manager Brown. I look to you, Madam Clerk, on public comment.
We do have several people signed in, so I will call the two names. The first, please go to the podium. The second, queue yourself and be ready. First up, we have Rick Snow, followed by Colin Biggs. Rick Snow.
Tuesday morning. I'm addressing the county commission as a whole, not individually, but the ADA and the manager might want to take particular attention to this. It's going to affect them more than anybody else. Title 18, Section 242, deprivation under color of law. That's the way the county's doing their business. I received from the ADA a restraining order. The judge saw fit to give me a remedy so I could come before the county. That was to call the security ahead of time. They would give me permission to come in. Now, the people in the, in the security division saw fit to block my phone number, not only on my landline, but on my cellphone. So that's constructively evicted me from the county commission's meeting. I sent a letter in on a form that I got from the county. And I know they received it because the sheriff came to tell me I couldn't do that again. I wasn't in trouble this time, but not to do it again. So the situation is they're depriving me of my rights. I'd like a forensic audit done for the way they're doing business here. Seems to me that the county commit, that the county employees find a way not to their job, and the supervisors are allowing it by not keeping tabs on what they're doing. The third, or the second floor here seems to be rampant with the, with the attitude of finding a way not to do their job. Excuse me. I get kind of wound up on some of this stuff because I've tried to handle it before and nothing seems to get done. Now, because I've been constructively evicted, there's a remedy for this. You send me a tax bill, and I pay that bill. That gives us an implied contract. I think you'll agree with that, the ADA. And that implied contract is you'll provide me services. For two years, I've been denied services. So with that being said, I would like a refund on all five of my properties of the taxes paid because I was deprived of my services by the county. I'd also like, like I say, a forensic audit has been done in a number of years. I would say in the last decade it has been done. We've had COVID. We've had ample opportunity for a forensic audit to come in, and they have enough reason because the things have changed. When COVID came, everything changed. Now it hasn't changed back, and the county seems to think that they can change it. Let's get a forensic audit, and let's get it done and make a new road for the county commission to go down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colin Biggs, followed by Bruce Parks. Colin Biggs. Bruce Parks, followed by Julie Ullman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bruce Parks, for the record. I'm here today to talk about WC-1. You're going to hear some folks come up here today, just heads up for you, talking about how they want you to override the will of the people. The 128,000 voters have said no to WC-1. You'll hear the hue and cry about how they're facing a four and a half million-dollar budget cut. And we know that's not true. We know that the county commissioners love our libraries just as we do. And there's no doubt in my mind that they will never go unfunded adequately. And that's the key word here. The only thing WC-1 did in being defeated was force the library to do what every other county entity has to do. Submit a budget that they can justify, period. I'm quite sure the sheriff's department would like a four and a half million-dollar budget surplus that they don't have to account for and can spend any way they see fit. But I know that you will adequately fund our libraries, as evidenced by the fact that just last year, when the library came hat in hand, said, "We need $150,000." Without hesitation, you voted to give them that money. If they can justify the need, I'm sure that they'll get the funding. Now, there are some folks that are going to tell you that the people really didn't know what they were voting for, which frankly, I find personally insulting. I thought the language was pretty clear and easy to understand. And if it wasn't, then well, perhaps we should go to the person that wrote it. And I submit to you that there is an organized effort underway to bring people to this meeting to try to convince you to subvert the will of the people. What you're seeing up there on the overhead is a display that's in numerous libraries across the county, encouraging people to come to this meeting and implore the county commission to override the will of the people. Well, the fact is, the people spoke, and they said, "No. We disagree with having a dedicated revenue stream that the monies are largely unaccounted for. We don't want that anymore." You submit a budget, and you can justify that budget. I'm quite sure you'll get the funding. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Julie Ullman, followed by Cliff Campbell.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Julie Ullman, branch manager at the South Valleys Library. I have lived in Washoe County and worked for the library since the year 2000. I am here today on behalf of my patrons, my staff, and my northern Nevada community to ask for your support for fully funding the library department's budget next fiscal year. I have just a few statistics to share with you from last year. At just our branch, 137,426 people came through our doors. Kids, families, seniors. That's just our branch, in person, through the doors. There were over 315,000 checkouts just from our branch. Over 9,000 new library cards were issued at our branch. And 14,268 people used our meeting rooms. That's not for library events, that's for meeting room use. 10,179 children and adults attended library events. Just at our branch, we have 12 branches. Libraries are essential to Washoe County. This past May, I shared our branch report with the library board of trustees. It included many patron comments. I shared the report with each of you commissioners last week in an email, and I want to highlight just three of the comments from our patrons. I gave a young lady her first library card this morning, and she held it up triumphantly and said, "Now I'm rich." Libraries shaped the person I am today, and I would be nothing without them. I just overheard a little girl leaving Storytime tell her mom that this is her favorite place, and she wants to have a sleep over here. Me too. Washoe County is a great place to live, and the library plays a role in that. I ask you, on behalf of those 137,426 people that visited our branch in person during the last fiscal year, to please fully fund the library department's budget just as you do for every Washoe County department so we can continue to make a difference in our community one person at a time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff Campbell, followed by Brandon App.
Good morning. I'm here today to kind of formally open a grievance on a property in our neighborhood. Conducting a commercial steel operation in a neighborhood zoned LDS, and this is Genie's District, District 5 in Golden Valley. These guys, I'm all about people starting businesses in their garages and growing, but these guys have been at it for four years. I don't know the name of the business, but they pretty much have a steel scrapyard, a huge, a huge operation going. They continually, these are hard to see, block the streets with forklifts. Residents going by, they're welding with no screens. It's a, it's an operation, like I said, this is going on four years. I have, I've called the county, I've called code enforcement. I've not gotten anywhere with them. In fact, the county said that they have paid a fine, and they're good to go about their business. But in 2011, the county revised the code and the zoning out there saying this was LDS, and, which is low-density suburban. And it states in that that any industrial land uses or industrial processes are prohibited in low density. Also, on the table for approved actions, right here, it says, "Commercial manufacturing in LDS not permitted," as well as "Commercial parking not prohibited." So see from these photos here, any given day, there's five to 10 employee cars parked on the side of the road, as well as, like I said, semis, unloading steel, forklifts. I called OSHA. They can't enforce anything in a residential neighborhood, but this is a commercial operation. They have a business license. I'm not sure if it's pertains to Washoe County, but they have a city of Reno business license. But, I mean, you just need a physical address to have a business license anywhere, right? So my concern is this not being enforced. And all they're saying is they paid a fine, and they can keep going on and doing this. But, I mean, what happens when, God forbid, something worse happens, or an injury or worse, and the county's on record fining them, but not enforcing any of these statutes that were put in place prohibiting this kind of business being in a residential neighborhood? So I just wanted to get in contact in person with our commissioners and state the grievance and go from there because I've tried everywhere else and have gotten nowhere. But I just wanted to get it on record, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. And if staff, we could have commission support, go and speak to this gentleman and see what we can do to help you. Thank you for highlighting this for us. We appreciate it.
Next up, we have Brandon App, followed by Paul White.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Brandon App, and I'm a resident of Margaret Drive, which we, I am here to, to discuss the property at 7505 Hillview Drive. I'm here today to urgently address the persistent unlicensed welding and steel fabrication operation that's at this residential property, which has severely disrupted our community's health, safety, and quality of life. For months, and the welding and steel fabrication business has been operating out of Hillview Drive. Despite multiple complaints and enforcement actions, the disturbances not only persist, but have escalated. Daily welding activities produce numerous sparks, significantly increasing the risk of accidental fires in our residential area. The fumes and airborne particulates from the metal cutting and welding operations pose serious health risks, especially to children and elderly. Additionally, the continuous operation of large generators, welding equipment, generates excessive noise disrupting the peace and quiet of our neighborhood. The environmental and aesthetic impact is equally concerning. The workers frequently leave discarded materials and trash in the public street and even spill into our roadways, detaching, detracting from the neighborhood's appearance and creating sanitation issues. There have been numerous attempts to place an outhouse on the corner of Margaret and Hillview. Furthermore, large steel structures within our residential zone are both unsightly and inappropriate, contributing to the cluttered industrial environment. Traffic and accessibility issues compound these problems. Regular deliveries of steel equipment block our public street, causing significant congestion and posing safety hazards to pedestrians and drivers. Moreover, there are often five to six vehicles from employees parked along our streets leading to blocked roadways and unsafe conditions. Despite multiple complaints filed over the years from March 2021 to October 2024, and several inspections and violations confirmed by code enforcement officers, including a confirmed violation on October 1st and a penalty issued on November 20th, the business continues to operate. Penalties and temporary compliance measures have failed, and the property owner has continued with unauthorized activities, indicating that the current enforcement measures are insufficient. The ongoing operation demonstrates a blatant disregard for Washoe County regulations and the well-being of our residential community. Daily welding sparks, fumes, noise, blocked streets, excessive employee presence, and the constant influx of commercial deliveries continue unabated, showing the previous actions have not effectively mitigated the nuisances. Given the persistent nature of these violations and the failure of previous enforcement efforts to remediate the situation, I respectfully request the Board of Commissioners to take immediate and decisive action. I urge you to issue a cease and desist order to halt all welding and steel fabrication activities at the address until proper licensing and zoning approvals are obtained. Furthermore, I request implementing more frequent inspections and enhanced monitoring of the property. Our community deserves a safe, peaceful, and properly zoned residential environment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. And it looks like Alexandra's in the back to also address that same concern. Thank you, sir. Sorry about that. Madam Clerk.
Next up, we have Paul White, followed by Amelia Golling.
In 2017, the homeless count for Washoe County was 80 people. This past year, 2024, went from 80 to almost 1,800. Based on that trajectory, in 2031, the predicted homeless population would be 36,000. And at that point, it would be lights out, game over for Reno. If you've ever gone out and you've seen the set on a west, the old westerns that used to shoot in Hollywood, it would look like a town on the front. They were typically just painted sheets of plywood. And behind them, they were just propped up with two-by-fours. But there was no town. And that's what the CARES campus is. The CARES campus absolutely needs to be deeded over to a coalition of churches that can run this thing like the gospel mission is run. It's violent. A person at the tent almost had a limb hacked off by a machete inside. It's full of drugs. It's full of bedbugs. How you get bedbugs in a new place, and the gospel mission's 60 years old and doesn't have them, I don't know. It's a farce from beginning to end. I assume coming out of the manager's office, you cannot get a tour. I talked to two of you, three of you weren't interested in hearing about it. You can't get an unannounced, any kind of tour of the CARES campus. The PIO wants to send you to one of their Hollywood-style facades, all these mega-million, million-dollar buildings you're building. If we don't do this, what we're developing, we're going to have this massive subsidized underclass that we won't be able to support. They have, gospel mission, when you run them right, they have more success stories in a day than the CARES campus has had since it's opened. They can't provide one example of a success story. One, in the years they've been open, success being defined as fully employed in an unsubsidized job, living on their own, living without subsidies, and living clean and sober. They cannot show you one in the safe camp or the tent. They're violent and right as we sit here this morning. There's hundreds and hundreds of men and women just laying around, rotting in that tent, using, stealing, doing nothing. We can't go on as a community. We, we're going to wake up and see 30-plus thousand homeless, and all of a sudden, everybody's going to say, "Well, we ought to do something." It's going to be too late. We're working on this. Education Crusade would love to tell you more. We're on it all the time. But sitting here and not saying anything is not going to make it go away, folks.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Amelia Golling, followed by Tracy Thomas.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Amelia Golling, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about the Center for Nonprofit Business, which you'll be hearing about later. I personally dedicated over two decades working with nonprofit and in the public sector, focusing on capacity building, community engagement, and organizational development. Part of this time was spent at the Desert Research Institute in both Reno and Las Vegas. But most recently, I've been working with national nonprofits on national programs and global programs. I've seen firsthand how critical it is for mission-driven organizations to have robust support systems. And it's from this deep understanding that I chose to become a founding board member of the Center for Nonprofit Business. And I stand before you to express my strong support for its mission and work. A recent report was just released, actually commissioned by the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada, and I saw that Eaton was here today. This report was released focusing on our community and was just released of October of 2024. And there are some key findings that also echo what the Center for Nonprofit Business wants to do for our community. A couple of these findings was high demand for skill-building opportunities for our nonprofits. The report indicates that a majority of nonprofits in the region need training and professional development, particularly in strategic planning, financial management, and fundraising. Through my own experience here and also nationally, I found that financial management skills are often underdeveloped, and we aim to cultivate greater accountability and transparency in this sector, which is also a partial reason why we named it Nonprofit, Center for Nonprofit Business to really underscore that these are businesses that need to have the skills and professional development to thrive as such. Another one was resource gaps and infrastructure needs, especially for our smaller nonprofits and medium-sized. Without access to collective resources, they struggle to establish some of these systems in place. This is also why we aim to partner with the Chamber of Commerce and why this is under the chamber. Just like they provide pooled resources for their small businesses, we want to do the same for our nonprofits. Part of these that we keep hearing from the nonprofits is collective resources such as healthcare benefits, access to human resources, and again, accounting services, which seem to be a large need in our community. Another one was a desire for a centralized hub. I don't know how long everyone has been in this community, but we used to have state resource centers or local resource centers, and those have all since sunsetted. So there's really no centralized hub that nonprofits can come to. Again, I've witnessed how capacity-building efforts can transform nonprofits, helping staff feel more supported, guiding boards toward more strategic decision-making, and enable programs to choose higher level of impact. By supporting the Center for Nonprofit Business, you're not only investing in one entity, you're investing in the entire ecosystem of nonprofits that serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Thomas, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning. I'm here as one of the four applicants in your initial item for today's agenda on item seven. I was just informed this morning that it has been postponed. Unfortunately, I will not be able to be here next week because we have a ceremony for casting the electoral votes at the Student Union at UNR at 10:00 a.m. next week. I would think at least three of you would be interested in attending that. Anyway, so I'm here to ask for your consideration for appointment to the term which ends in 2028. I believe there's two positions open, one that ends next summer and then the one that ends in 2028. For a board that centers on the appeal of property values, it's important to take inventory of what each candidate brings to the table. I was surprised to see the other three applicants had not listed any experience with appraisals or local real estate. I wanted to ensure you that I have seven years' experience with the local mortgage industry wherein I process, closed, and underwrote applications for residential financing. I reviewed residential appraisals for soundness and accuracy. I also completed a residential appraisal class through our local community college to ensure I had a good grasp on the terminology and concepts. David Iasi was our computer consultant at the time and suggested I apply for a position with two local commercial appraisal offices. Bill Kimmel is nationally known for his expertise in casinos and I believe still maintains his appraisal license number one. I have actually voice-messaged with him. So I'm going to be talking to him to try to get you a letter of recommendation by the time you guys review this at your next meeting. I founded the Reno Sparks Apartment Rental Survey, which is still maintained to this day, and spent quite an amount of time in the Recorders and Assessor's Office verifying arms-length transactions and gathering parcel maps to use as comparables in reports. I still remember seeing the Tahoe Pyramid Link on maps long before Rosewood Lakes Golf Course was even built. After working four years for them, Bank of America's Commercial Appraisal Office contacted me, and then I worked for them for three years before they chose to close their Reno office and consolidate everything down to Vegas. I chose not to move to Vegas. It should also be noted, one of the other candidates has resided in Washoe County less than a year, and another one, less than five years. Historical knowledge of our real estate landscape is particularly useful for this board. I have resided in Washoe County for 48 years and have been witness to the many transformations within this Great Basin. I have a practicing command of Robert's Rules of Order and believe I possess much to contribute to the Board of Equalization and to the property owners of this county. I would greatly appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address following the money to food when it comes to homelessness. It used to be that most food came from small family farms, but many of them have been taken over by large corporate enterprise farms. People on small family farms ate food that they had grown on their own personal farms on land that they would own. Farms that grow a lot of food that is then for sale now have to sell it for prices that are wholesale. The large corporate farms seem to set the price for all the small farms that sell it for that price. The large corporate farms have developed a process where they make more money while the small farms make less. So most of the money can be followed to such a So most of the money can be followed to such a large corporation. To make money is the goal of such an organization, and in order to carry out such an operation, because they have the power and money, they can use manipulation. They have access to all kinds of nationwide transportation and have access to all kinds of national communication. With all of that considered, it is no surprise that under their control, the price of foods will rise. But if you are homeless, you have no garden for food, and if you are unemployed, you have no money for food. So with all that in mind, I can't help but conclude that the money is followed to the rich when it comes to food. So I'd like to thank everyone who does not act with greed, but instead helps to feed those who are in need. And I'd like to thank you all for listening to me today. Now I'm hungry for food for thought, so I might have more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Janet Butcher, followed by Ellen Zoswak.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments verbatim. Two words of the day: accountability and efficiency. I understand people are upset about W C One not passing. There was no concerted effort put forth by any political group like the Freedom to Read Nevada group that showed up at the library trustee meeting handing out buttons, even after Chair Silver asked not to have any political things at the meetings. Thirty years ago, when this special little pigeonholed money was set aside, thirty years ago is a lot different than twenty twenty-four. And I have to say that the, this money that was pigeonholed could have indeed a effect on taxes increasing, because if there's a budget deficiency, and we all know that the county budget right now is two to three times that of any other county in the United States of equal size. To me, it sounds like since the federal government is having the Department of Government Efficiency, perhaps we should have the Department of Washoe Efficiency. We'll call it D U E. I noticed that once upon a time, prior to the current director, that budgets were talked about in the trustee meetings. We don't get reports in the trustee meetings anymore on the budget for the library. There needs to be accountability. If you can, I had to cost justify putting terminals and PCs on people's desks. What was I going to save people to do something so they didn't have to get up from their desk and walk to a centralized terminal? Certainly, the library director, and if he doesn't know how to do a budget, perhaps he should do a little bit of classes and familiarize himself with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen Zoswak, sorry about the pronunciation, and Kathy Drake is following her. I will distribute her documents.
I want to introduce myself to you. My name is Ellen Zoschak, and I'm a resident of Washoe County who wants to be actively involved in the community. So I applied to serve as the Washoe County non-elected representative to the District Board of Health. I'm extremely interested and well-qualified for this position. I have extensive healthcare background. I'm an RN. I'm a national healthcare consultant. I have my own small healthcare consulting firm after working for large healthcare firms such as PricewaterhouseCoopers, Navigant, and Truven Health, which is now IBM Watson. I have recent board experience. I just finished three years with the Association of California Nurse Leaders as their president-elect, president, and immediate past president. I also served as their secretary treasurer from 2014 to 16. I have relevant education with both my master's in public health and nursing. Some of my competencies include finance, social determinants of health, strategic planning, and workforce needs. I would welcome meeting with you individually or to answer any questions. I am asking for your support for my application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Drake, followed by Drew Rebar.
I am Kathy Drake, a resident in the immediate area of the proposed Wedge Parkway Soccer Stadium. I oppose this stadium. I am here addressing item nine on your agenda. Today, I would like the Washoe County Commissioners to pass a motion asking the Washoe County Attorney to formalize a statement that would say, whereas the use of this donated land includes a deed restriction, saying the land is to be for public use. Whereas, the daughter of the donor has stated at another public meeting that building a soccer stadium does not meet the gift's specific criteria. Therefore, the use of this land for a soccer stadium's use is not approved by this commission. After the first and second reading of the motion and a majority approval of this motion, this action would finally stop the soccer stadium at Wedge Parkway. I'd like to give my rough draft of this motion to the clerk. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Drew Rebar, followed by Nancy Wayhe.
See, I lost about nine seconds there where I wasn't speaking. If you could zoom in on this for me here on the screen, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. Anyways, I've been restricted from the library, and the allegation is that I've harmed a librarian. Anyways, here's a copy of the video where it's alleged that I harmed the librarian. And if you just want to watch it, what you'll notice is the librarian pulls on the door three times very hard against me. I'd really like to know the librarian's name. It's about a thirty-second video. I made it repeat itself a few times. But anyways, my library privileges are restricted for a year because you've got violent librarians. Anyways, W C One was voted down, and you say, well, why was it voted down? Well, our librarians are not inclusive, but they are exclusive. Why are they that way? Well, I've told you this many times before. You've got a really bad library director of Jeff Scott. Hopefully, your Board of Trustees will make him go away soon. Last meeting, I handed out a lawsuit that I hadn't filed yet. Well, right there, now it's filed. So we do have a lawsuit for your libraries because of your director. Hopefully, we'll dig up some good public information on that and let people know what's going on in their government. I believe that our government needs to be constitutionally compliant, and that's really my goal in being up here, is how do we protect our constitutional rights for everybody in our community? That's really what this is all about. The libraries have not only excluded me, they've excluded many, many people according to library director Jeff Scott. I got trespassed formally when I went there to inquire about somebody else that had been restricted and what the rules are. The rules are very, very unclear. What we need from you, our county commissioners, is we need clear rules for what our county agencies are doing. We need good county employees that are willing to serve and help everybody in our community, not just those that they align with politically or socially. And that's the real problem, is we've got a group of people in our county government that have a political agenda, and they don't want to help the other people that they don't seem to like, and therefore, well, now we've got lawsuits. So I would hope that we could solve these problems. I appreciate you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Nancy Wayhe, followed by Trista Gomez.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your service. My name is Nancy Way. I'm retired from American Airlines, where my primary focus was government compliance and anti-terrorism. I live in Saddlehorn, which is just up from the parcel of land that the previous speaker referred to about the soccer stadium. Sorry, I'm nervous. This is my first time. In my view, we currently have a rare opportunity to decide the future of this land. While the idea of a sports field or soccer stadium may seem enticing, I would ask that you consider an alternative vision, one that goes beyond current trends and would act as a gift to our community and would serve residents of all ages. That vision is the creation of a public green space. History shows us the transformative power of parks and cities. Although these examples are obviously of a much larger scale, consider the following: Central Park in New York City, a green oasis in the middle of a huge city. Designed in the nineteenth century, it was a forward-thinking decision that continues to provide recreation and inspiration to many people. Closer to home, we have Golden Gate Park in San Francisco. We've all seen in the last ten years the loss of green spaces in Reno and the amount of development. I think we will all regret if we don't create a green space. We will regret making this a soccer stadium. These parks are investments in the long-term well-being of their cities. These parks have become cultural and environmental legacies. The smaller spaces offer similar benefit. They are proof that well-conceived green spaces provide great value to the citizens. You have the chance to create a legacy for Reno that you will not regret. While the addition of more sports fields or a soccer stadium serves a specific purpose for a limited audience, its use and appeal are generally narrow. A green space, by contrast, is a gift to all. It would serve everyone, both young and old, and you would create a legacy for all of us. Let's take advantage of the chance to create something that will endure, a legacy. I don't think any of you will ever regret the decision to create a green space. I do believe strongly you will have deep regret if you decide otherwise. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trista Gomez, followed by Jerleene Bryant.
Good morning, Trista Gomez. Please put my comments on the record verbatim. I don't have prepared comments today, but I do want to talk about the library funding. I have a twenty-nine-year-old, and I had him when I was really young, and that twenty-nine-year-old to this day will ride his bike from his midtown house, take his little Washoe County library bag, and he will go and he will check out three to four books a week or every two weeks, every week, every time. Never is without a library book. He went to the library, his brother went to the library faithfully, like their whole lives. That's what we did. We could. By the time my little ones, then my littlest one is now seventeen, there was a lot different of a perception of what I felt was safe inside the library. I didn't allow them to go willy-nilly. I couldn't guarantee kind of what curated section of books was going to be at the library. I didn't feel safe letting her just go to the library. I wanted to make sure that I was there when they were talking to the library. So it was different. It was a different kind of thing. I've had librarians help my kids get books because they had special English and history programs. I appreciate these librarians. With that being said, I think we have to, I think you guys have a conundrum waiting for you. You have to decide if you're going to avert this will of the people, this vote that was taken, kind of under the auspice of they didn't really know what they were talking about or they didn't really know what they were voting on. Or, but we could say that about any question that we disagree with. Or, do you say poor performance from leadership has consequences, and we're going to take that into consideration when we are funding a library director who, you know, has questionable ideological things? You know, why don't we have a library director from Nevada, from our area, who is welcoming to everybody who doesn't have curated spaces that are just for one side of the aisle or another side of the aisle, places where everybody feels safe, where he knows how to do budget management? I am concerned that what we've done is created a situation with this kind of like slush fund where, you know, the lack of accountability has also created a lack of public trust, and that lack of public trust is something you guys are going to have to vote on. And I don't envy you for that. I think it's going to be a hard decision for you have to make, but these are real issues that people really voted on. This is real things that they really want addressed, and everybody should feel safe in the library. Our kids should feel safe in the library. The curated sections in the library should be for everybody, and the budget should be accountable, and the processes should be efficient. And so that's my input on the library, and I hope you vote, I hope you take into consideration what the people voted for.
Thank you.
Jerleene Bryant, followed by Mark Markel.
Good morning, Chair Hill and County Commissioners. My name is Jerleene Bryant. I am the CEO of the Nevada Humane Society, and I'm here today to ask for your consideration and your support on Agenda Item thirteen, which would award dollars from, it would be A R P A, the American Rescue Plan Act, dollars to nonprofits in our community to expand on spay and neuter for owned animals. One of those nonprofits is Options Veterinary Clinic, that does wonderful work in our community, and the other is Nevada Humane Society. For Nevada Humane Society, if we are awarded this funding, it would allow us to reinstate a critical program, a public spay and neuter program, that would put us back to levels that would be pre-pandemic. And so our estimation and our hope is that we would be able to sterilize ultimately over twelve thousand animals in our community annually. Much like many communities in our country, Washoe County, Northern Nevada is no different. We suffer from an overpopulation of animals, specifically dogs and cats. That creates quite a burden on those organizations that house these animals. We are unable to, or will not be able to, adopt our way out of this situation. Truly, the only sustainable solution is to sterilize animals, mitigate those unwanted pregnancies, and keep those animals from being born that then ultimately would need a home. So again, I ask for your support in Agenda Item thirteen. I will be here for the duration of this meeting, so when the agenda item comes up, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Markel, followed by Carrie Brown.
Is there a Mark Markel?
He's coming.
Okay, I see him.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for moving the mic.
Hello, County Commissioners and County ADA, I don't know, whoever. And hello, my name is Mark Markel, not Markel, Markell. And I was involved in a And I was involved in a drunk driving crash way back in 89. And this time of year, I would hate to have people not be able to do well. I lost my wife because of drugs. And I could never subvert Christmas since 97. We cut it well before that too, since 89, really, because I lost my wife. I'm just telling you this, people, because I don't want it to happen to you. And it's been real, I can't take care of myself. I have a traumatic brain injury. I rode eight times in the vehicle, and I was ejected and it landed down my head, and it put me in a coma for a month. And I just don't want other people to go through what I've been through. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markel, and thank you for helping us spread that message of not drinking and driving. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next up, we have Carrie Brown followed by Sandra Payson.
Hi, my name is Carrie Brown. I'm the clinic manager at Options Veterinary Care. For those of you who don't know, we're the only nonprofit veterinary clinic in all of northern Nevada. Our mission is to provide low-cost, affordable, and when needed, free veterinary care to anyone located in northern Nevada whose animals otherwise would be going without necessary medical care. I'm here to talk today about Agenda 13 and just want to say how grateful we are for the opportunity to serve this community. One of the other ways we provide service is by performing spay-neuter surgeries and administering core vaccines that are crucial to animals' well-being and to keeping animals out of our shelters. We provide this service predominantly to seniors, veterans, low-income families, and people utilizing our CARES campus. With the increasing cost in veterinary services in this community and across the whole country, the need for affordable or free spay-neuter has only increased. And Agenda 13 would make a tremendous difference in this community were it to be awarded to the nonprofit groups who will be providing free spay-neuter services. So, again, I just want to say how grateful I am for the opportunity to be able to speak here today, and especially on such an important, impactful, community-relevant topic. And I want to say how grateful everyone that I work with at Options is for the opportunity to have served this community over the last four years and provide crucial veterinary care to help people stay with their animals. And we're looking forward to doing it long into the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Payson followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning. My name's Sandra Payson, and I'd like to irate the need for libraries. I grew up in a library. My daughter grew up in a library. My granddaughter's growing up. It's just a special place. You can check out free books, free videos. I would check out DVDs for my great nephew, you know, for free of charge. And there's something to be said, holding a book and not looking at a screen, you know? And also, I'd like to speak on Item 9, for the people in charge to be fair and transparent to, and to put in writing, "There will never be a stadium at South Park." We live off Wedge Parkway, and I'm afraid what all the traffic would be like, even with the proposal that's out, that was more, 300,000 more of a bid than another group that would do that. And if that would be, we'd be having to pay for taxes for that. And I'd like to request no, like, backdoor deals that we don't know about, because that's our neighborhood and we care. And we love the park that's there now and the open space. I just said to my husband yesterday, driving, I said, you know, we had moved from Vegas three years ago, and I said, "I just love all this open space." I mean, they didn't have that in Vegas. It's really something special. And to see the natural stuff grow and even like a park and, you know, not where there's buildings all over the place and stuff, you know? And so, I'd like to, I'm concerned about any traffic that's on Wedge Parkway, since we live right off Wedge Parkway, to get in and out of our neighborhood. And if I could have your consideration, I'd appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Penny Brock followed by Bruce Foster.
Penny Brock, for the record, at our cab meeting out in South Valleys last week, one of your staffers was there, and he promised on your behalf that you would not turn our park, South Valleys Regional Park, into a soccer stadium. I don't know how he had the authority to do that, but he did that on your behalf. However, everything we're seeing is, we're not trusting that promise. Why not? Well, in March, you voted to approve Dow to come up with this, they call it a site design. How much did that cost? In March, you voted that it was to come out of the $2 million of COVID money. And now we learn that it's coming out of the regional construction tax. Does staff have the authority to move money around like that? We just learned about all these different funding sources. There's not been transparency to the people in South Valleys, to our cab. We need transparency. The staff comes to our meetings and they talk about anything but the important details. We learn, at last meeting, you approved the $3.5 million from the Pennington Foundation to develop our park. However, we know that Wendy Demony wants a public-private partnership. We learned from this request to Pennington, there was $800,000 from the RCT tax, of course, the $2 million from the COVID money you gave last year, then some kind of additional Washoe County funding of $544,000. Where did that come from? And then the Little League donated $75,000. So with these four fundings, it's $3.5 million. And on top of that, you add the $3.5 million from the Pennington Foundation. You're going to vote today on Number 9, which is for the first big contract, and there's problems with that. We'll talk about that when we get to Number 9. But what we're asking for is that the county commission, that you put it on the agenda, that you will in fact vote, that our park will stay a park and not become a professional soccer stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Foster followed by Zachary Gray.
Yeah, good morning, all your ladies and gentlemen. Merry Christmas. And today, I wish to speak on, of course, the library. And I, as a follower of that Jewish carpenter, I feel that there's only XX and XY. And I just want to start with, and you probably heard this before, is that Emily Jrembisky is the president of American Library Association. She is a self-described Marxist as president of the American Library Association and says that public education needs to be the site of socialist organizing. Libraries really do. And this applies to both the Washoe County library system as well as the school district. These are, I took advantage of my library privileges, and these are the type of books that I found. And what I've determined that with the books that are available within the libraries, nothing more, the libraries are nothing more than an extension of our center and other gender-affirming care facilities. And this is basically a grooming operation about, if you're a drag queen and you know it, this is about social justice. And then we have this here. And then we go to, you know, the library system, particularly during June, free between the lines. And a lot of these books are in the junior section or teen section, which is essentially based on pornography, sodomy, you name it. And bottom line, I just wish to expose the fact that, you know, we are working very hard to, you know, bring this to life, to the public, and I'm not sure why we have to provide more money to a grooming operation, even though all other areas, they do a great work. And we see that the trans ideology is really anti-God and anti-family. And we also know that there's a lot of individuals, like Robbie Starbuck, this is a great stocking-stuffer for this Christmas, and then also Riley Gaines, which you supported, you and our volleyball team, forfeiting, not playing a team that had a transgender on it. And then, of course, we have to go back to Chloe Cole, that her issue was indoctrination and irreversible surgical procedures. Thank you.
Zachary Gray followed by Rachel Story.
Hello? Hi, my name's Zach Gray. I live in South Reno. I have an eight-year-old and five-year-old boy, three-year-old and one-year-old daughter. I'm here for a very simple reason today, and it's to support the South Valley Park expansion and master plan project. I don't believe the stadium's on the table at all, but I do believe that the expansion project is ready to go, and those of us that live in South Valley are super excited. As a member of the Washoe County Little League, I'm also very excited to support the softball field component of the park. I know our board and all of the players in the league are very much working hard to raise money, to assist with the park expansion and the softball field. So that's why I'm here today. I'll keep my comments short. Thank you so much for having me, and see you all soon.
Thank you. Rachel Story followed by Nancy Satinari.
Good morning. I'm super nervous, I hate speaking, and I'm probably going to cry, so just to preface that. My name is Rachel Story, and I have a comment about Item 13. I'm the founder and president of Feral at Heart. Feral at Heart is a 501(c)(3) organization, much like Community Cats Reno, where we focus on trap neuter return of feral and free-roaming cats. We equally act as a full adoption agency for the feral cats we remove from the streets as well as intake from rescue partners such as Washoe County Regional Animal Services and Community Cats Reno. Washoe County Regional Animal Services, we receive their most urgent cats needing out of their facility that are on the euthanasia list. We are also used as a resource by the Nevada Humane Society, the SPCA, and Washoe County Regional Animal Services when they receive calls from the public requesting help with feral cats in our community. Trap neuter return, also known as TNR, is the only humane way of managing free-roaming cat populations and also the root solution to reducing the number of cats coming into Washoe County Regional Animal Services and the Nevada Humane Society. Eighty percent of kittens coming into our shelters are born outside from feral and free-roaming cats. And only 7% of cats coming into Washoe County Regional Animal Control, Animal Services, are claimed by their owners. This tells us that the majority of cats coming into our shelters were never previously owned in the first place, bringing us back to the fact that most cats coming into our shelters are from outdoor colonies. The way to mediate this is to shift our focus from being reactive to instead being proactive on a community level by increasing our TNR capabilities and capacities. TNR greatly reduces the number of kittens being dropped off by Good Samaritans to Washoe County Regional Animal Services and the Humane Society, reduces the chronic full-capacity status we have been reaching consistently. TNR reduces euthanasia rates due to the lack of kennel and shelter space and reduces the funds and resources being spent on caring for so many cats in our shelters that never should have entered the shelters in the first place. It costs Washoe County Regional Animal Services $107 per cat that they temporarily house. We ask for a consideration of allocation of funds to include the small organizations that are the ones, sorry, directly taking a hands-on approach in the community every day before the cats even make it to the Humane Society or Washoe County Regional Animal Services. And to also include Options Veterinary Care, who is the only other clinic aside from the NHS performing high-volume TNR.
Thank you.
Nancy Satinari followed by Clinton Bolt.
Hello, good morning. My name is Nancy Satmary. And just a little bit about myself, I'm a native Nevada. In fact, I was born in Washoe County 60-plus years ago, lived here my entire life. And the reason I'm here today is because I really have a passion for the libraries. I have enjoyed them my entire life. I can remember when I was a little girl, I got my first library card, and I looked down those rows at the library of all the gleaming books, and I just, I felt so empowered by all the knowledge that was available to me, just because I had a library card. I am urging you to restore the funds that are going to be taken away from the Washoe County library system. This $4-point-million budget cut is going to severely impact their staffing and their services. The question that was proposed on the November 5 ballot this year, in my opinion, was misleading and confusing. I've talked to people since the vote, you know, vote took place, and they actually didn't understand the question, and they were sorry they voted the way they did. They actually thought they were voting for an increase in their taxes, which is not generally a popular thing with a lot of people. Also, if you look at the margin that the vote went, it was rather slim. It was basically a difference of four points, 52% versus the 48%. And if you account for a lot of people that voted that probably really didn't understand exactly what they were voting for, I think it's worth considering that in making your decision as well. Furthermore, the libraries are an essential pillar of our community. They offer a wide range of invaluable services that benefit people of all ages. Such- Such drastic reductions in funding will have a far-reaching and long-lasting negative effect on our community. On a personal level, the library services profoundly enrich my family's lives, and in numerous ways. My younger grandchildren adore visiting their local library. The preschool programs and activities not only entertain them, but that also helps them foster social skills and install a lifelong passion for reading and learning. My older grandchildren rely on the library's computers and books for in-depth research for school projects, and they also love deep dives into their favorite subjects. My oldest granddaughter is an avid animal lover and has devoured countless books, probably every book that's ever been printed in the library, about her favorite subject matter, which is pets. She could tell you everything about every species and how to take care of them, and I'm sure we have a future.
Clinton Bolt, followed by Roger Edwards.
Shalom, commissioners. I'm Clinton Bolt, and I'm here to just briefly discuss my opinion about the master plan and implore you guys to consider the great Reno balloon races, and not hindering them in any way. They help put Reno on the map globally. As many know, it is the largest balloon race in the world, and God only knows how much revenue it brings into Reno over the course of the year. And the master plan is to, from my understanding, bring a pickleball court and tennis court to the San Rafael Park, which would in turn hinder the balloon races to some extent, possibly. And that park, kind of to echo what others are saying about this other plan that's going on this month, that you guys were voting on. That park has just been a great part of the community, in terms of the green that it provides for people to go and just do all sorts of things freely. But if we put, you know, if we pave that land, I don't think that would be an ideal situation, and I implore you guys to consider that. I've grown up here my whole life. I've been a resident, and I've gone to that park numerous times over the years. If anything, maybe we can consider revitalizing the log flume and all that, the old stuff that used to be there that was great for families and kids and just whoever wanted to go, you know, you'd have to pay for things like that, and it'd be a great way to bring revenue for everybody in the community to use, instead of just a select few. And just hindering the balloon races, I believe would be a foolish never. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Edwards, followed by Eaton Dunkelberger.
Good morning. Roger Edwards, for the record, 50-year resident of Washoe County, a public volunteer since August of 1965, when I went into the Air Force first time. Most recently, I volunteered to be an intake specialist at a voting polling place, most recently out in North Valleys. I'd like my comments entered into the permanent record, too, please. But also, it, I tried to volunteer, and they wouldn't let me volunteer. They said, yeah, I had to be an employee, to be an intake specialist at a polling place. When that started, you know, years ago, you could be a volunteer at any part of the election operation, and they were happy to have you. They kept saying they were happy to have me, right up to the day that they fired me. And that's the letter you guys got. It wasn't, I, I never had a counseling, I never had a conversation with my counselor. I was never actually even introduced into my polling place manager, or vice manager, for that matter. We were inundated with thousands of voters, hundreds every day. I personally put in over 125 at my poll book location, just for me, every day, over 125. And it's recorded on your little poll book machine, so I mean, it's not, I didn't make the number up. But anyway, that horse is already out of the barn. I understand that. But we're not going to get any of the problems solved for the public's benefit if we don't talk about this stuff. You know, I was just an intake specialist, you know, one of those people behind the poll book doing the magic stuff for 10 hours a day. But we need to talk about that. The person that signed that note didn't know anything about it when I came into the office the next day. Just, I just saw, I just saw Shannon here yesterday, and I got my final check, finally. And anyway, she didn't know anything about it. She didn't know I was even fired. You know, the place is just a mess, and it needs major, major overhaul. You can't just turn it over to the state ROV and get it fixed. You know, you have to have Mr. Manager or somebody get in there and stir this thing up until it's repaired, all right? It's, it affects the voters. I mean, it's not me. I was a volunteer. I don't care one or the other. But the voters aren't getting served, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Eaton Dunkelberger, followed by Mark Rado.
Hey, thank you, and I appreciate your time. My name's Eaton Dunkelberger. I lead the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada. Wanted to speak on two items. One is in the consent agenda, 5D1 and 5D3, the Regional Behavioral Health Initiatives Fund. And I just want to say that I'm really appreciative to the county for your leadership here. Whenever we're taking on complex issues, getting together business, government agencies, and nonprofit organizations together to work on problems is, I think, the only way we really solve complex issues or make headway against complex issues. So I'm really excited for this. I also just want to applaud Julia Raddie's leadership on this, and thank the commissioners in advance for approving that consent agenda item. The second item is number 13, the ARPA funding. So I joined the Community Foundation a little over two years ago, and I was consistently hearing frustrations from funders, from our government partners, and from nonprofits themselves about how we could get the most from our nonprofit, our nonprofit landscape or our nonprofit industry. So the first thing we did is we built a coalition. It included Gabrielle Enfield from the county, also Brad Johnson, who runs the MPA program up at UNR, and Ken Call, who runs the Redfield Foundation, to see if we could study this and figure out what we could do next. And so we did release a study in October. One of the key findings was a need for a centralized resource hub for nonprofits. And we have that now today through the chambers' leadership, and Jeff and Christie through the Center for Nonprofit Business. So just want to really thank both Gabrielle's time, the commissioner's time, and putting this money to work to help improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our nonprofit sector. I think it's going to do a lot of good for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Mark Rado, followed by Wes Muse.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. My name is Mark Raydow, president of Attlebourne Football Club, longtime resident of Northern Nevada. Appreciate the opportunity to be here before you today, and appreciate the many people who've come out to follow a process. And I think we're all committed to a process, and appreciate you allowing us to be part of the process. And that is to be part of our government, to shape our community. It's why we're here. I think it's why you're here, and why so many people are here. The process gives you, the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners, certain responsibilities and authorities. Earlier this week, we heard from some of your staff that gave us, that gave the community some element of assurance, and that was the future of what South Valleys Park was going to become. And there's some work that's about to be started, but there's tremendous distrust in our process. And I think the county commission has a perfect opportunity to dispel distrust and create trust. I hope we can all agree that that would be a positive. I have asked this board, your, this commission, the community has asked this commission. We've, I've made presentations, they've made presentations, we've sent emails to you. And I'm here again to ask you for clarity and to develop trust among our community. We're concerned that the South Valleys Park can pivot from a park to a stadium. And I know it may not be the intent, but it can pivot, and that's where our concern comes in. And there's many things that come up that lead toward our concern. There are sketches about a future stadium that includes a ball field. I'm so glad that we'll have a sports field for girls to play softball and boys to play softball, and all kinds of sports. But that does not prohibit the fact that a stadium couldn't come in at a later date, a later point in time, and we're asking you to dispel the rumor mill. In the halls of sport and professional sport that I'm engaged with, I hear constantly that a stadium is going to come to South Valleys Park. In the halls of business, I hear that an appeal is on the cusp of coming again. We're asking you to put a stop to that. Please, put it on the agenda and vote no to the stadium. Ninety-nine percent of the people don't, 100% don't want a stadium there. We all would like a stadium in the future, and we all support a park. Please, join us. Be clear. Put it on the agenda, please.
Wes Muse, followed by Kit DeCarlo.
Thank you for taking time. I hear my comment. My name is Wes Muse, esteemed members of the board, County Commissioner Brown. I'm a native Nevada. I'm a constituent of County Commission Two, represented by Mike Clark. And I'm here today to speak specifically on agenda item number nine, and to begin infrastructure improvement for Washoe, or South Truckee Meadows Regional Park. For one, this begin and this, this expansion of this park meets the intended land grant, the original land grant that was there. Further, on the expansion of it, which will include the Washoe Little League expansion in softball fields, specifically earmarked for female athletes and youth athletes, is encompassing with what staff has on their master plan, going as far back as 2015. And latest renditions of those have done nothing to dissuade that plan and the way that it presents to the public. And this, and this first agenda item is the first step in beginning the realization of that. Many topics have come up around a soccer stadium, and the only way to ensure that there is no change to how it is currently configured is to move forward with the plan that the staff has meticulously laid out, and begin work on this park, begin to use the monies that have been granted for us to move into phase two of that, which will be two, hopefully three, softball fields that will serve as a backdrop for future generations to experience what Washoe Little League has and youth sports in general. We have an opportunity here, as representatives of both the South and the entire Truckee Meadows, to create something truly beautiful that can be used. Lastly, I'll say, I serve on a number of boards, or a couple of boards here in Washoe County, on volunteer basis. I'm a dad to an 11-year-old and a soon-to-be eight-year-old, whose lives have been greatly enriched by the Washoe Little League, and I also serve on the board. And this project should move forward. I implore you to make a motion and to approve the agenda item number nine today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kit DeCarlo.
Hello, County Commission. Thank you for your time. My name is Kit DeCarlo. I am a Washoe County resident, and I just wanted to start off with saying that I love the library system. I, it got me through many school projects in my middle school and high school career, and so I greatly appreciate the system. But I do not support the direction that it is going with the books that one of the speakers earlier showed. That age demographic that it is targeting is very dangerous, and our role as adults is to protect children and their innocence, and those books that that gentleman showed are a direct threat to their innocence and to their natural development. And just being kids, I think it matures them too quickly, and that's why I do not support, I did not support the Washoe County Question One bill. And I think it is extremely offensive when people say that the Washoe County citizens did not know what they were voting for. I believe you're implying that people are too stupid to understand, and by voting to regain the funds that was lost with that bill, really just defies what the people already voted on and makes our voices mute. So that's why I have to say on that. And then also, I just wanted to express my lack of support for a soccer stadium. I do not support it at all. In fact, I think it is also very dangerous for our community. I recently went to Las Vegas for a work trip, and I talked to a lot of the working-class community while I was there, because I had to use Uber and stuff, and people said that they were not happy with the new Raider Stadium, because it decreased their quality of life there, because crime goes up with a professional stadium, traffic goes up. And we all know that tourists never take care of our land like the natives, like the locals do. So by adding a soccer stadium to our, off-of-wedge parkway would add more traffic, would cause more crime. And Northern Nevada is already known to be a capital for sex trafficking. I think by adding a professional stadium, that would make it even worse, and it would make it even more dangerous for the women and children on our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cherie Jamison.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Cherie Jamison. I was CEO of the Food Bank of Northern Nevada for 32 years, and enjoyed doing that and learned a lot about this community, which has enabled me to speak today about what we need. During my tenure at the food bank, several entities existed here which enabled nonprofit executives, board members, and staff to learn the skills needed to run an accountable, focused, well-funded, and well-governed organization. These entities included the United Way's nonprofit center, the university's continuing education program, and at least two more organizations, which brought training and capacity-building resources to nonprofit leaders throughout Northern Nevada. The United Way's Standard of Excellence Program, a very clear blueprint requiring documentation of financial accountability, board governance, community partnership, governmental accreditation, and other measures of nonprofit viability, was developed locally by nonprofit leaders and the United Way staff. This certification became the yardstick by which the Washoe County Funding Consortium, the United Way, State of Nevada Grants Management Unit, various foundations, and other funders measured local nonprofit organizations. If agencies had the certification, it was like the good housekeeping seal of approval. Unfortunately, this certification program is no longer available due to a shift in priorities. I retired in 2020, and when approached to be on the board of the Center for Nonprofit Business, I was stunned to learn that in just four short years, all of these resources had disappeared. There is nowhere in our community for new EDs and CEOs to go to learn the skills needed to be excellent and accountable leaders. I was as green as grass when I came here to lead the food bank, and would not have known where to turn to learn what I had to understand to be successful, had it not been for the entities I have cited. It is vitally important for this community to have viable and accountable nonprofit partners to provide services for the hungry, the unhoused, victims of domestic violence, those experiencing addiction and mental illness and other issues. The funding being considered today for the nonprofit business, Center for Nonprofit Business, will underwrite the first steps in building back that capacity-building resources that we have lost and need today more than ever before. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in, but I do have some emails to place on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will take a short break and come back at 11:40 and continue with our Commissioner and Manager announcements. Thank you very much.[618.66][618.66]
All right, I'm going to bring this Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. It is 11:40, and we'll now move into item four, Manager Brown.
Item four is Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards.
If y'all have side conversations, if you could take it out in the hallway, that would be great. Continue on, sorry, Manager Brown.
Let me start over. It's Commissioners, County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards, and Commissions' Updates Request for Information or Topics for Future Agendas.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything for us?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a couple of things. We do have an opening on the Debt Management Commission. There are two at-large positions. Applications close on December 31st at 11:59 p.m., so if anybody's interested, please go to the website and file an application. There is also an opening for the Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. So for those of you who are concerned about potential stadium being built in South Valleys or the master plan at Rancho San Rafael, this is the body that oversees the expansion and how we proceed with our parks. Invite you to apply. The applications close December 23rd, I'm sorry, at 11:59 p.m. And I just want to say with regards to item nine, this really is a matter around the expansion of the park to provide many of the amenities that the public has been asking for, including additional flat fields, baseball and softball fields, restrooms, picnic areas, and so forth. It has nothing to do with a stadium. There is no stadium proposal that the county is considering. There is no appeal of a stadium proposal. All of those things are false, and the process, if you follow it through the Open Space and Parks Commission, has been very open and transparent. The meetings have minutes, and you can go back and see how we got to where we are, including with the measure that the board is going to vote on today. So again, if the Open Space and Parks Commission has an opening, and if you're interested in getting more involved in directing or guiding the future of the parks and open space, we welcome you to apply. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Manager Brown. And I see Vice Chair Herman has signed in.
There we are. So, this week on Monday, I was in a meeting where we were looking into choosing a new ROV. It was exciting to be on the board, and I felt honored to be there. And we were very successful, and in fact, we unanimously chose a candidate that we think would be wonderful for our ROV. So I'm just anxiously waiting now for the results of that. I mean, not results, but there's some checking, backchecking and that sort of thing. But I feel that we have done our work and have come up with a wonderful answer. Thank you.
Thank you for your update on that, Vice Chair Herman. Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have provided updates in the past, but I'd like to again recognize Abby Jacobin and her team and all the parties, Justin Taylor, for literally moving forward with the, I'll use the term transparency for, you know, Washoe County's checkbook Nevada model that the state treasurer rolled out quite some time ago now, but it's still recent. And the fact that Washoe County is going to look at holding a workshop as the budget is put together to ensure that everyone is well-informed, an opportunity to, again, you know, support our commitment to always be transparent. And I'm excited to see that come out. That workshop, it looks like, will happen sometime early 2025. But in terms of the budget and all the expenses and any of the funding and all of that being finalized, it's very, very close. So stay tuned, and I'm sure we'll all be announcing. Washoe County does a great job in communication, saying to the county manager and the leadership here to help share when that's live. So I just want to give another update on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership on that, Commissioner Andrea. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of things I'd like to discuss or bring up, some announcements. I see that we've pulled item 5C2 off the agenda today. That's awarding the contract for senior meals. You know, if you haven't been to these meetings before, you may not have heard me say this, but if you have been, this would be a broken record. The food that we're serving to the seniors is, in my opinion, subpar. We've got, the folks at the jail prepare better food, the people at Catholic Charities prepare better food, the people in Douglas County, in Carson City, everyone seems to prepare better food for their seniors than we are. We do, and we have, and we distribute to our folks. I've never said we should be the best, but we shouldn't be in last place. I eat the senior food on a regular basis or taste it. I don't really eat it. And it isn't anything you'd want to serve to your family members or somebody you cared about. And it was on the agenda, but for whatever reason, it's pulled. I would like to ask now to see the proposals from other vendors. I was told during the time that the contract was out that I couldn't see any of the other proposals because of security risks or God knows why a sitting commissioner can't look at bids coming in, but apparently that was the case. And now that the contract apparently is about to be awarded or at least voted on, I'd like to take a look at the other folks that made proposals to the county. So I'm asking for that, please. And as far as library budget cuts, we're hearing about that. I mean, I think folks are trying to co-mingle a couple of different things here. You know, the library board is the library board, the library director. We also have a situation where some 128,000 people were able to read the ballot properly and made their votes. I think if we, as commissioners, disenfranchise those folks, that would be amount to about 25,600 people per commissioner if we all voted unanimously to change the will of the people. I'm a big supporter of libraries. I think the library will continue and continue to flourish. I will be here to support the library, but I'm also going to support the folks who voted the way they voted. I'm going to support the library board of directors, the chair of the library board of directors, the chair of the library board of directors. These board of directors were appointed by this commission to handle the issues of the library. They need to handle their situation. They need to review the budget. They need to find out exactly where the money is going there. And then we'll look at if there's any shortfalls or shortcomings. At least from my perspective, I'll be willing to look at any shortfalls. But we need to, the folks on the library board need to have an opportunity to look at the budget, and it's my understanding that that's been withheld from them. Maybe that's true, maybe that isn't, but that's my understanding. So I'd like to see and let the chair of the library board get her hands on the budget and review that and figure out exactly where things can be addressed there, and then bring that to this board and make a presentation to the board and let the board decide after that. But just to ask, the public, just to ask us to take away the will of the people, I'm just not going to be part of that. I'll be supportive of the library, and I'm also going to support the folks' vote. We were confused. We didn't know this. That wasn't properly explained. You know, people can figure it out themselves, and they voted, and they voted to change the policy and the amount of dollar funding based on something that was supposed to sunset. People, we don't have the ability to get in a time machine and go back 30 years and ask the voters at the time if they were influenced to vote for this because it was told to them 30 years ago that this thing would sunset. Maybe some folks would have not voted for it if they had known that they were not being told the full facts, that 30 years from now, that's going to disappear. You see where I'm going with this? So we've got two groups of folks that were possibly disenfranchised, people who voted on it 30 years ago and people who voted on it last month. So I'm supporting the people who voted, and I'm also going to figure out a way to support the library. I think that we need to make it clear to the director of the library that he has the last two years to try and work with the people. This was a backlash vote. This was the pendulum swinging the other way. People were dissatisfied with the way the library was going, and this was their way to voice their opinion through the purse strings. And it happened. And now let's figure out how to make things work properly. So that's something I want to talk about. Next, park plans. You know, I understand that there's somebody sitting in the audience here who wanted to provide a bid for park plans, and for whatever reason, their bid wasn't accepted or looked at or acknowledged. So I'd like to find out a little bit more about that before we vote on this, plans for the parks. Paul White made a comment about what's taking place at the CARES campus. I couldn't agree with this citizen more. There's lots and lots of problems there. I can't find out answers. The citizens can't find out answers to their questions, and I think there's a lack of transparency there. I'd like to know more about what exactly the outcomes are at the CARES campus. I think Mr. White, if you go back and review, if you weren't here in the meeting, and review it and see his comments, I have to agree with him. Tracy Hilton-Thomas wants to be considered for the Board of Equalization, County Board of Equalization, an extremely important position. For those of you who are not familiar with it, the county just recently settled a lawsuit that took place 14, 15, 16 years ago. We finally paid it off. That was the Board of Equalization. That was the county assessor, overvaluing property. Cost the county, you know, I hear reports of $50 million in over taxes that were returned, overpaid taxes, and another $50 million or thereabout, could be $80 million, could be $100 million. It's still a lot of money. Whatever the exact number was that the county paid out, that was because of the Board of Equalization. That was because of the assessor's office. So it's a very important board to be sitting on. Coming up in the very near future, January 15th, is the filing date for folks who have a dispute over their property taxes. I'm personally encouraging everybody on the Fourth Street corridor that owns property to have their properties reevaluated. I think that there's an external influence that's devalued a lot of property in that area, specifically around the CARES campus. I think that property owners have been harmed over there, and that's something that needs to be addressed. And that'll be something on the forefront for this new Board of Equalization to be looking at sometime in February or early March when that happens. So those are, a lot of important things are happening here today that might just look like an easy board appointment, but it's not going to be that. So I just hope my fellow commissioners understand that. And Trista Gomez talked about the Board of County Commissioners has a conundrum here. I don't believe we've got a conundrum with the libraries. I think we have appointed board members to the library, and I think we should entrust them with doing their job. Again, I'll state this. The chair of that committee should be able to review the budget, bring back recommendations to the board, and let us decide how and if we need to help further fund the library. One of the questions that I talked, when I talked to her about, she'd just like to know how much the county's paying for security at the libraries. You know, I remember not too long ago, less than a year, maybe a little over a year ago, there was a big mercury spill at the Spanish Spring Libraries. I find out we don't even have security cameras around the library property. Why would the county not protect the citizens' assets and have security cameras at these venues? So again, just some thoughts, things that I think people should realize. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? I'm seeing any. We'll now move into our consent. As Commissioner Clark pointed out, we are pulling item 5C2 on consent, and are there any other staff changes that we need to know about, Manager Brown?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, I am looking for a motion on the consent.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea, and I will second. And Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on consent?
There is. We have Penny Brock signed in.
Thank you.
Penny Brock, for the record. So I had filled the card out on 5C2, which I learned that you have pulled. That's a good thing because we've got a huge problem with the current food provider, Trio Community Meals. I'd like to know how many bids were there? If this is going back, to come back on the agenda, some of the things that we, the community, and the taxpayers want to know, how many bids? The other thing that's a huge issue is it's to be a two-year contract, but then they're going to be awarded for one-year renewals. That means it's a six-year contract. This is outrageous. Best practices in the business world is maybe a two-year contract, but often it's only a one-year contract because that keeps the vendor on their toes. This way, they're going to get a six-year contract? No wonder we're feeding our seniors such horrible meals. Commissioner Clark posts on his Facebook site pictures of these meals. I don't think anybody would even feed them to their dog. This is absolutely outrageous. There's no excuse for this. I mean, they're going to be awarded $3,100,000? How many seniors does that feed? And for that, they get these horrible, awful meals? I would think that as a Board of County Commissioners, you would want to pride yourself in finding the best vendor to provide the best meals for our senior population. There's over 100,000 seniors in the county, and yet many of them don't go to the, they could use the food, but they see or they've been there, looked at the food, tasted it, and they're not going back again. So we don't know. Many of these are, they need the meal. We don't know where they're going. Are they going to the Reno Sparks Gospel Mission? Are they going to Catholic Charities? There's so many questions. I don't know who's sending out these bids, who's looking at them, but you as a county commissioner should make sure that whoever's doing this does it the right way. Your reputation is on the line. Let's do the best we can for our seniors when it comes to providing wonderful meals for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it sounds like that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now move into item six, and Manager Brown.
Item six is a recommendation to acknowledge receipt of the Washoe County Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Auditor's Report, and Report on Internal Control of the Fiscal Year Ended June 30, 2024. As presented, approve the reappropriation of $41,822,481.55 for the fiscal year 2025 budget consisting of $14,807,504.04 for purchase order encumbrances committed in fiscal year 2024, and $27,4,977.51 for spending of restricted contributions and fees. Authorize the comptroller to proceed with distribution of the ACFR for public record as required by law.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Hill is here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Kathy Hill, Washoe County Comptroller. I have with me today Robert Andrews, accounting manager, and then Laura Nelson from IED Bailey, who will do the auditor presentation. Prior to giving a financial highlight, I'd like to thank IED Bailey and Laura Nelson and her team for their efforts on this audit. It's a complex audit. In addition to that, Robert Andrews and the accounting team for their financial reporting and the complexities associated with all the programs that the county offers and all the federal funding that the county has received and everything that's required of that. Our fund balance increased very slightly over this last financial year. A portion of that is associated with the corn fairy adjustments, the contract negotiations, and the C-Tax remaining relatively flat. Those were high expenses, leaving the general fund balance relatively flat. And right now, I'd like to present Laura Nelson, so she can discuss the findings.
Welcome.
Thank you. Laura Nelson, Senior Manager with IED Bailey, for the record. I'm here just to represent IED Bailey in the audit that was performed over the fiscal year 2024 Act for for Washoe County. We issued three separate reports as part of our audit. The first is our audit opinion, which was pages two through five of your Washoe County Act for. We issued an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we provide. So that is good news for Washoe County. The second report that we issue is the Report on Internal Controls Over Financial Reporting, and that's on page C2 of your Act for. This identifies any internal control deficiencies that we find through the audit, and they are classified as either significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, depending on the level of severity. We identified three material weaknesses through the audit. The first was related to an unreported accounts payable liability. The second was related to proper revenue recognition, and the third was related to proper recording of leases and software subscriptions under GASP 87 and 96. All material issues were corrected by Washoe County. And just for some context, the revenue recognition finding in GASP 87 and 96 is very common among our governmental entities. GASP does not make it super easy for governments when it comes to those items. And then the third and final report is the Report on Each Major Program and Internal Controls Over Uniform Guidance. This is on page C4 of your Act for. And this is really just our report over the single audit of the major programs that we do. Your schedule of expenditures of federal awards had over $89 million of expenditures this year. We audited four major programs, and those were emergency rental assistance, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, adoption assistance, and epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious diseases for FY24. For that, we identified four findings. The first two were over coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund. The first was over subrecipient monitoring. There's some specific requirements about submitting the assistant listing number to the subrecipient at the time of the payment, which didn't always happen, and monitoring single audits for subrecipients. The second was over reporting, where there are just certain amounts on the quarterly reports that didn't tie to underlying support. And then the last two findings were over emergency rental assistance program. The first, over eligibility, as there was one month selected, where there is no documentation over the determination of eligibility. This one was really a result over the program not having enough time to correct their findings from the previous audit. That finding has already been corrected mid-year FY24. And then the last finding was over reporting, as certain numbers on the report did not tie to underlying documentation. And then there were no findings reported for adoption assistance or epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious diseases. I would like to provide context, but in the prior year, the single audit identified nine findings. There were only four this year, and as I said, one's already been corrected. So Washoe County has made considerable efforts to increase their compliance when it comes to the major program requirements. And with that, I just wanted to close out by thanking Comptroller Hill, Robert Andrews, and their staff. They are always excellent to work with, professional every step of the way, and very efficient in providing what we need. It's a huge process to get the Act for issued and to issue the audit, and we appreciate their partnership. So thank you for your time today.
Yes, and congratulations on the unmodified opinion. That's a very big deal. What a complex job you all do.
Yes. Any other questions regarding that?
Are there any board questions? I'm looking to board members to see if there's any. I'm not seeing that there is any. And Manager Brown, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, great, great work. Congratulations. And with almost $90 million of federal funds that came in the door and only four or three minor issues, congratulations.
Yes, I would absolutely be remiss if I didn't recognize Comptroller Hill for her participation in the transparency, and I apologize. I didn't mean to exclude. There's a lot of folks at Washoe County working on this. I don't mean to take away from the item. But I do want to thank you and IED Bailey for, actually, quite frankly, Ms. Nelson, the complexity of this and the efficiency of how you delivered your report is to be commended as well. I really appreciate it, and thank you, Comptroller Hill, for you and your team and all of your hard work and making sure i's are dotted and t's across. Regulations are always fun. GASP is always fun. So going from nine to four is improvement, and knowing that those are all corrected and the internal controls are in place should give everyone assurance that we have a well-equipped leadership and a team that is well-equipped to handle the budget and expenses and funding. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you and the team, yes.
Yes, thank you. So it doesn't look like there's any questions. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay. I am looking for a motion from the board.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any questions on that motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen. Thank you very much. That motion passes unanimously. It looks like staff has also asked to table item seven and 11. Those will be heard on December 17th. But I am looking for a block vote from Vice Chair Herman at this time.
Thank you. Item 10 is a lot of money for block vote item, but this is the way it reads. It's item nine, 10, 12, 13, and 14.
Thank you very much. Is that in the form of a motion?
In the form of a motion.
Okay. And I'm looking for a second on the block.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea. And And Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on the block?
There is. Let's see. Item nine. We have Penny Brock followed by Nate Evans.
Penny Brock, for the record. Actually, Mr. Evans probably should have spoken before I did because his company, Integrated Concepts, bid on this item, and they were left off. That isn't right. I would recommend and ask that this agenda item be tabled also so that Mr. Evans' Integrated Concepts bid can be considered. This is what was in the staff report, who the bidders were. And you can see that Integrated Concepts was left off. We want to know why. We, the taxpayers, the residents of Washoe County, want to know why. Mr. Evans, in fact, is one of our neighbors out in South Valleys, and we like to support our local businesses and so on. He was at our cab meeting last Thursday and made this public knowledge. So I felt it was important to bring this to your attention, that his bid was left off. And those of us at, well, all of the county should be concerned, but especially those of us out in our area, we want to know why one of our residents was left off. So I don't know. And one of your staffers was there at our cab meeting. He heard that. So he may have already apprised you that this is an issue, and we need an answer. Thank you. Oh, one other thing is on this design, which this bid is all about. We want to know why there's this road here. We know that Wendy Demonti asked for the road to be built to connect with South Virginia, and in fact, was to go through the Pioneer Trailer Park, which the Demonti family owns. We were told that there would be no road. So we want to know why this is on the Dow engineering site map. Thank you.
Thank you. Nate Evans, followed by Dan Gallagher.
Hello, good morning. My name is Nate Evans with Integrated Concepts. Born and raised here in Reno, born at St. Mary's. Been here like 50 years. I've worked for like all the largest Q and D granted. I've been superintendent for those companies. A few years ago, I started my own company, and we're slowly growing in the community. So we go onto a website called DemandStar when we bid on these. It's a third party. We were on there. We bid, we don't know the results. So we kept getting the office, we keep getting on there to see. It said under review, under review. And then all of a sudden, it was just off the website. So and I got a call from a friend that, you know, it was an agenda and it was being voted on and that it was being awarded to S and C, which was just shown. And their bid, you know, we just showed it, but it was basically $2,365,000, you know, right here. And I didn't know there was 39 bidders, but this is my original bid. So when we came in at $2,988,000, so it's roughly $67,000 lower than S and C. I wasn't made aware of why or anything, so I'm here just to find out. We're very capable, very responsible. We take pride in our work and would be honored to do this job if you guys would, you know, beg in or asking to give us the opportunity to do this work. And I also live right in the community, maybe a half a mile away from the park. So, you know, it'd be a great honor to build this for my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Gallagher, followed by Mark Rado.
Hi, Dan Gallagher. I have been involved with Washoe Little League since 2016 with my two kids. I've been a board member since 2018. I served as league president from 2021 to 2023. I am also a founding member of the Washoe Softball Division. I am here to vote and implore you to support Agenda Item Nine, which will officially encumber the ARPA funds that are required to do so by the end of the year to go into the regional valley, South Valley Regional Park expansion. A little background on Washoe, we've been in a league since for 65 years. And for 62, it only offered baseball. In 2021, we expanded to softball, and we started small with 85 girls. Last spring, we had 250 girls. That's over 200% growth in overall sports demand. We expect more this spring as well. When I was president, I reached out to the county staff and officials asking how do we get the master plan fulfilled? It called for new diamonds. It called for new ball fields. We knew we needed new fields for the softball program. Funding was the answer, right? And we've worked with staff for the past three years to find any and all ways to fund this. The break is when this board allocated $2 million out of ARPA funds in 2023. I want to make sure we understand that if it doesn't get encumbered by the end of this year, it goes back to the federal government, and nobody gets to use it. So this is really important, and there's a lot at stake. Sorry, this is a big one for me. To complement that $2 million, the Pennington Foundation, who we've written letters to, also approved $3.5 million specifically for building softball fields, right? That is huge for this community. And in the past eight years, in South Reno, they have built two elementary schools, one middle school, zero youth sports facility of any sort. No investment in this, and it's super long overdue. So here we are in this moment. You have the perfect alignment. You have federal funds allocated and ready to go. You have a private donor who has specifically given a donation for these fields. You have a leaned-in volunteer, community-led Little League group who's willing to engage and help operate. Last night at my house, we had a fundraising meeting and built the plan to fundraise an additional $1 million for these fields specifically, to install lights and scoreboards and bleachers. This is a vote that has generational impact. And I don't want that lowest bidder by $67,000 made us lose $2 million worth of benefit. When I was president, I met generations of baseball boys who got the benefit. These girls need this too. I implore you to vote yes.
Thank you.
Mark Rado, followed by Terry Farrell.
Thank you. My name is Mark Rado. That was excellent presentation. Thank you for that. Item number nine is about the award of a bid, not necessarily the allocation and the funding of where that goes, but it's the award to who should do this work. The Board of County Commissioners has a duty to serve the people, to serve the best interests of the people. And the priorities, as it was defined by this board, were the lowest bid, the most responsive bid, and the most responsible bidder is where this money is now going. And money can easily corrupt, corrupt what integrity, character, and the direction that this county commission takes. And the DemandStar system that Mr. Evans talked about demonstrated that there were 39 bids on this, in this process. And the actual bid is not just 2.3 million, it's actually 2.5 million as it's shown here. Here is a list of the different bids that were presented along with the additional allocation of funds. Again, it's, and here it only shows six total bids, and that is in stark contrast to what Mr. Evans has told us about 39 bids. And why should, where did the other bids go? This is the distrust that I spoke about earlier about where, about backdoor deals and developing trust among our community. The better bid from our neighbor, from a qualified individual, from Integrated Concepts, is a bid for 2.2 million, nearly $2.3 million. It's actually a total savings of nearly $300,000. And that is 10% of the project, which can go further to the very benefit of, to benefit the community and the people that are designed to, intended to benefit for this. Now, it's a lower-cost bid. It is more responsive. Mr. Evans is here with us today. He's our neighbor. He's our resident. He lives across the street. He is more responsible. He is responsible. He's got a history of work, that he's done nuclear power plants and underground tunnels in the BART system. This project is easily within his control. And I'm asking this board to represent us and deliver to the lowest-cost bid, the lowest-cost bidder, and thank you.
Terry Farrell, followed by Kathy Drake.
I'm just here to support not having that soccer stadium in our neighborhood. And that's all I want to say. Everybody else has already said it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kathy Drake, followed by Kevin Anis.
Hi, I'm Kathy Drake, the homeowner on Bellingham near the stadium. I'm concerned, as a taxpayer, about the bids that are, were given on the infrastructure for the park. I would recommend you table that approval today for more discovery between now and the next meeting to actually see what happened with all those bids. If you had 39, we should see 39 bids. And I would like to know what specifically disenfranchised Integrated Concepts. Was there some bidding irregularities with his form, or what happened? The savings, when you add up the basic contract with Sierra Nevada and their contingency, is $2,500,000. You added Integrated Concepts, it's like $225,000 difference. I think as a taxpayer, I want my money spent correctly. And I also want to be sure everyone has a chance, if they submit a bid in the proper form, at the proper time, with the proper qualifications. So please table it today, and two weeks later, let's have a complete answer and get on with that infrastructure that we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin Anis.
Good afternoon, I guess it is now. My name is Kevin Anis, and I'm a proud Washoe board member, passionate softball coach, and very proud girl dad. I'm here to ask to approve item nine to move forward with the plan as it says. I'm going to reiterate a little bit, but I am a board member. So softball is a very fast-growing sport. Washoe Little League has grown to be larger than most of our local baseball leagues. And we did a great job representing ourselves and the community down in San Bernardino. This year, we won state, and we were on ESPN. So that's kind of cool for the community. As I mentioned, we are now larger than Reno National, Reno American, Reno Continental. They all have their own facilities. The girls deserve one too. If we don't use and appropriate these funds this year, we lose the money, the $2 million in ARPA fund, as well as the additional monies that was granted to us or given to us by the Pennington State. We could lose all of it. And, you know, lastly, just to reiterate what you guys have said up there, you know, with regards to the voting for the library, right? You know, you are here to speak on behalf of the people. Your mindset should be the same with your staff. Your staff recommended to move forward with this person. I don't speak on their behalf, and maybe there was something else to it with more than just $67,000. Again, staff recommends. If the staff that we've dealt with for the last two years has been amazing to deal with, they've been on point, they've been responsive, they've been respectful, I trust their opinion implicitly. You guys should do the same. If the staff recommends something and you do not take that recommendation, what are you saying about the staff of which we, of which you employ? Again, just to reiterate, we have to vote yes today, or we risk losing the funding. And if you do it because of $67,000 or because of anything else, what are you saying about, you know, what belongs with girls' sports, as well as what happens with your staff? I appreciate you guys very much. Vote yes or nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
For item 13, we have Bonnie Brown, followed by Kim Becker.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Brown, and I'm on the Board of Directors of Options Veterinary Care located in Reno. And I just wanted to thank you all for considering funding for spay neuter for the community. We are incredibly grateful and excited to be able to deliver services to Washoe County residents. And as I think you all know, it's just tremendously needed in the community. I also just wanted to say that I will be here if there are any questions on our proposal, and I'd be very happy to answer those. Once again, thank you for all that you do, and thank you so much for considering this funding for spay neuter for the community. I think it's super important, and we're really very grateful for the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Becker.
I'm Kim Becker, and I'm just a citizen here, and a sixth generation of this area. I've watched from beginning of the new Humane Society and was very much part of the beginning building. I know that you have a certain amount that will be allocated, hopefully, to the spay and neuter clinics. And it looks to me as if it's three-quarters going to the Humane Society and a quarter going to the options. I'm sorry that the SPCA did not put in a bid also to be considered. I feel that it should at least be 50/50. The county commission is the only really oversight, other than the board for the Humane Society, and they have a board. There doesn't seem to be much accounting for their finances. And two years ago, they, I don't know how you misplace three-quarters of a million dollars, but two years ago, they misplaced three-quarters of a million dollars. That was in the news. Nobody seems to know, but there are quite a few funds sitting in their coffers, whereas places like the SPCA and options, and actually, the county animal services, they're desperate for any kind of monies they can get. So I want, would be very helpful. I would be very pleased if you would relook at how much will be allocated from those funds. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, we have a motion and a second on the block vote. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it would be, in the spirit of continued transparency, important to understand how the bidding process. I think we have heard from, actually, Mr. Rado, thanking everyone for the consideration of process. And I'm wondering if we could have Staff, County Manager Brown, to talk about what the process, what the legal compliant process is when looking at the bidding, how that works. And I don't know if someone's here to do that?
Yes, we can have Duane Smith here.
Yes, we can have Duane Smith here.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good morning. For the record, Duane Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects. And let me see if I can help explain. I wasn't quite prepared to do a complete process on our, on our bidding, but I can tell you a couple of things right off the bat. First of all, we follow all NRS and county policies in our bid, bid advertisement, our bid opening, and our bid recommendation process for award. We consider the bidding process sacrosinc. We are consistent in our bidding. And in the past, when we found some issue with our bidding, we've adjusted and made those corrections. We did receive six bids for this project. We do utilize DemandStar, which many agencies do. This is a national platform, and it allows for a transparent process in the submittal of bids. Bidding is complicated. There's a lot of steps in the process, and those steps in the process are there to allow for both protections of the bidders and also protections of Washoe County. This is the, I don't know if you want to do the overhead, but this is the bid package that was placed on DemandStar. In the bid package, it requires many things, things such as, and I can list all those off for you. I had to put on my glasses. Give me just a second. First of all, is a bid tab. And bid tabs are very important. This is what the bid tab looked like in the bid package. So it shows all of the items that are identified and described that the contractors need to acknowledge and show that are part of the bid package. This is the construction work. These are things like how many cubic yards of fill material have to be placed, and how many linear feet of road have to be constructed, et cetera. Bid tabs are very important. There's a company certification form that identifies the owners of the company, and that they're certifying that their signature on the bid is now a legal document. There's a bid bond. The bid bond is a requirement that bidders provide to Washoe County in the event that they withdraw their bids or can't complete the process, and it gives the county protections in the bid process. There's a five-percent list of subcontractors that bidders utilize for their projects. This was an issue not too many years ago, and the NRS was updated to allow for transparency in the subcontractors that contractors use for their projects. You might remember probably about five or six years ago, when this was updated, that we actually had a project that didn't submit the five-percent bid list, or the five-percent subcontractor list. And Craig Madoll with AGC, the Association of General Contractors, came, and we talked about that in one of the board meetings. There's a lot of other elements that are required to be submitted as part of a complete bid package, so that we can deem that bidder responsive and responsible. We did have six bids that submitted all the documentation that were required. That allowed us to move forward with the evaluation process. The lowest responsive and responsible bidder for this project, based on the submitted bids that were conformed, is SNC. We did receive in DemandStar a spreadsheet, I think that you saw that spreadsheet a minute ago showing up on the overhead. That was not a complete bid package, and I think there was a lot of misunderstanding about what that was. So when staff received that, I think there was some lack of clarity. Was it one of the five-percent bidder subcontractors as part of it, or was it a complete bid? Because of that lack of clarity, it was not included in the review of the responsive and responsible bidders that submitted. Again, bidding is complicated, but we did not have thirty-nine bidders. I would be ecstatic if on projects, we had as many as thirty-nine bids for projects. We're very fortunate on this project to have six. I think you've seen probably in our staff reports that we've brought forward to you, sometimes we have one bidder that meets the NRS and Washoe County policy requirements for submission of bids. So I want to be very clear there. We're not thirty-nine bidders that submitted in DemandStar. If you do enter into DemandStar, you can look at the, at the bid, but you will not only see bidders, but you will see things such as addendums. So on many projects, there are addendums, and this particular project had five addendums. Those also have to be acknowledged by the bidder who submits their bid, in order for it to be a complete bid. So those show up as line items also in DemandStar. So I think that might be where there's a little confusion about thirty-nine lines in DemandStar. And I also mentioned that the subcontractors that the prime contractor utilizes will also show up there as well. So I think that may add to a little bit of the, I hope that adds to some clarity when, when we've heard things like thirty-nine. Again, we do hold our partnerships with our contractors very high. I'm very happy to work with the contractor that just came up. It sounds like they've been in business a short while. We want to make sure that contractors have opportunities to bid on Washoe County projects, and be successful in bidding on Washoe County projects. So I'm happy to work with that particular contractor, and any other contractor, as they move through the process about learning how to submit bids, what the requirements are, and how to make those effective bids. I hope that adds a little bit of clarity to your questions. Certainly here to answer any more that you might have.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Smith. I, I think that there's always some misunderstanding with terminology in terms of what would be considered a lay term of being responsible versus a compliant term of being responsible. The lowest responsible bidder is actually defined compliant-wise, and I think that that's important to state. I also think your comment about the complexity of bidding is, is actually, you know, rings true. And I have seen the dedication of staff, yourself included, in terms of helping folks to be the customer service that we're here to provide with those essential services. And I'm very grateful for you offering to help Mr. Evans or anyone, to be honest with you. But I do think it's important, for the record, to be very clear. There's a legal responsibility that has to be followed. There's a process that has to be followed. This isn't arbitrary. It's very fair and open and transparent. And I think it's just important to ensure that everyone understands those terms are not something that is a vernacular that we use in every day, but is actually a vernacular of words that are compliant, and a process that's very complex on what that means. In fact, I'll just add that sometimes being the lowest responsible bidder doesn't necessarily mean the lowest bidder. And I know you're shaking your head, Mr. Smith, because of the complexity of what that entails. And I think there's also an insurance to be a good steward of the taxpayer dollar, and to make sure that i's are dotted and t's are crossed. I do have a quick question. And so thank you and your team, because there's a lot of complexity to that. But I do have a question. When bidders, if you will, are not successful, are they formally notified?
For the record, again, Duane Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects. What we do is we send a letter to the lowest, the apparent lowest responsive and responsible bidder, that we will be bringing that item forward to the board for their consideration and award. Typically, we don't send out a bulk mailing, or phone calls, or that type of thing to the other bidders. You know, that, that could be something that we could do, maybe to help. But that information should be also available on DemandStar. So I think that you can gain access to the website and look and see who those, those bidders were. And if there's a challenge in that process, I'm, again, happy to help with how to, how to do that.
So we, so it's clear that to everyone, all the bidders that are looking at submitting that there's a close date, and there's an award date, so that they could look to see if they were awarded that, or where they fell on the, with the other contractors that submitted. Just curious how that worked.
Yeah, again, again, for the record, Duane Smith, I think that there might be an opportunity to enhance the communication then to all the bidders, to make sure that they're all aware. Again, we work with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at the time that we go through and conform those bids following the NRS and county processes. So that becomes the apparent low bidder, and then that's what we bring to the board. Part of that process is they have some additional documentation to submit as we go through that. But again, I, I don't believe it's a standard of practice that we reach out to every single bidder, but that's something that we're more than happy to do for all our bidding processes, and maybe that, that's a great suggestion.
Well, it might be something to discuss. I don't want to put a burden on additional, on staff. I know everyone at Washoe County is super busy and balancing a lot of competing priorities. But it is also, from a business perspective, the responsibility of the contractor, too, to go online and see where they stand. So I think it's great that you might be exploring that. But I do appreciate the explanation. I appreciate all the hard work. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Smith, for, for some clarification on this issue. You know, from my perspective, when somebody comes to a county meeting and thinks that they had a bid that was less than the bid that was accepted, I just want them to have clarification. So now we've got some transparency. We've got it on the public record. On December 10th, at 12:41 in the afternoon, this was discussed. Somebody thought they had a bid that was more acceptable, or a lower, lower dollar amount, and come to find out, you know, it wasn't the bid that was accepted. And as far as, for Mr. Evans to have, have, have that information, and you've stated you'll meet with him and explain whatever took place, that's good to know. It's on the record. And for Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Anis wanting the, this ball field to go forward, well, we understand that, but we need to get this on the record. Somebody's made an allegation, accusation, inquiry, and we need to clarify that, so the public understands. I mean, this is a $67,000 difference in the bid on this, but it could have been 6.7 million, it could have been $67 million. And, and we need to let the public understand that we wanted to find out, I wanted to find out, other commissioners wanted to find out exactly what took place. So I think that's on the record now, and I, I think we've done what we need to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Any other comments from the board? Okay, all right. Well, we have a motion and a second on block, and we've done public comment. And with that, I will, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes four to zero. Thank you, everyone, for that. We are now going to move into item eight. Manager Brown.
Item eight, recommendation to receive an update and provide direction to staff by confirm, by confirming or modifying the order of initial actions to implement the envisioned Washoe 2040 master plan. Staff requests board input on the order of prioritization for the following subjects. Number one, countywide housing affordability and supply initiatives. Number two, resources to implement envisioned Washoe twenty-four, 2040, sorry. Number three, public noticing. Number four, Tahoe area plan. Number five, warm springs, groundwater rights dedications. Number six, indicators for measuring envisioned Washoe 2040 master plan achievement. And number seven, permitting requirements for equine businesses.
Thank you, Manager Brown. And it looks like Ms. Mullen is here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Kelly Mullen, Planning and Building Division Director. A little over a year ago, this board adopted the envisioned Washoe 2040 master plan, and also identified the priority order for the initial set of actions to start implementing that master plan. This afternoon, I'd like to provide you with a brief summary of achievements since that time, as well as seek for you to confirm or modify an updated proposed priority order. I'd like to start by grounding the discussion in the importance of the county's strategic plan and the county's master plan to the work that we do. As you know, long-range planning is something that is very resource-intensive. It's very time-consuming. It's super important that those efforts stem from the direction that this board provides. And of course, the Board of County Commissioners, you set the policy. You set the direction with that strategic plan and with that master plan, and that drives the work that we do. So just for an example, out of the county's strategic plan, there is a primary objective related to economic impacts. One of those underlying goals associated with that is meeting the needs of a growing community. And then some of the initiatives that tie to that, both from the strategic plan and the master plan, are a variety of actions related to housing supply, housing affordability. Those are top priorities that we are currently in the process of working on. Those are just some examples. And I will say that there are, of course, like with many things, there's complicating factors, things like the Tahoe regional plan, or the Truckee Meadows regional plan, or the upcoming legislative session, that also often will mandate additional work for us to do. But by and large, you set the direction, we carry it out. So diving into the meat for today, again, that master plan sets the vision. How is this county going to grow over the next 20 years? And as you know, that's something that is a very labor-intensive, multi-year effort. It includes actions that are short-term, medium-term, long-term, that are expected to occur in stages over the next couple of decades. There was a new topic that emerged during the discussion on priorities at the end of last year, with a request from Commissioner Andreola, support from other commissioners as well, to take a look at some of the standards for equine businesses. So today, the board is asked to confirm or modify where that falls into the order of priorities for us to carry out. And at the end of the day, we just want to make sure that staff efforts do align with your priorities. And so just to give you an update, what you'll see on the screen right now is the proposed, recommended, updated, the updated order for implementation items. And there's been significant progress on the board's top priority related to housing affordability and supply. If you remember, back in March, this board adopted co-changes that made it easier, faster, cheaper for property owners to establish accessory dwelling units on their property. And in July, this board adopted changes that updated standards for multifamily housing. Today, you're going to be asked to adopt changes that support housing for caregivers of the infirm. Next week, you'll be asked to hold a second reading for changes that address missing middle housing types. So there's been a lot of work on this particular initiative. And then upcoming work is also going to focus on changes that spur the creation, or intended to spur the creation of deed-restricted affordable housing, as well as other changes that get at those supply issues in our community. In terms of resources to implement the master plan, positions to support this work over the next 20, 20 years or so, they were requested but not approved in the last budget cycle. This upcoming FY '26 cycle, we'll be making a related net zero request to hopefully get at that effort. And then for the next item, after the, related to the Tahoe area plan, after the initial priorities were set by this board, you may be aware that the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency made some changes to their code related to housing incentives. All of the jurisdictions around the lake are mandated to incorporate those changes into their codes. And as a result, we are recommending that this particular item, the update for the Tahoe area plan, gets moved up one slot. And we have scheduled to begin the process for that with an update next week, starting next week, an update to the community on what that process will look like. The fourth item is related to public engagement. If you'll remember, back in 2022, neighborhood meetings were introduced with the intent of engaging citizens earlier in the planning process. That allows a little bit more opportunity for their input to be considered and addressed during the planning process, before they go to a hearing. And so this particular initiative is aimed at doing an assessment, potentially making some changes to those processes. But at the end of the day, the goal there is really to make sure that we have as efficient and effective of an engagement process as possible. And number five, that relates to the new item, the new item that I mentioned, updating standards associated with equine businesses. Again, Commissioner Andreola had Again, Commissioner Andriola had identified that as a priority item. There was support from other Commissioners. Commissioner Andriola did dedicate a good amount of district funds to kind of assist in getting the process starting, started, by hiring a consultant to take a look at what other jurisdictions around the U.S. are doing, as well as solicit input from the community on this topic. That was done with a survey and a series of workshops, looking at equine standards and getting some input on that. As the remaining work is going to be completed by staff, we are asking this board to identify where in the priority order it should fall. And we are recommending that that work start immediately following the assessment on our public engagement processes. So the last two items, items that were there before, we're recommending stay as Item Six and Seven. That relates to some of the groundwater rights dedications currently required in our code is less than what is actually needed. That is a change that we expect to bring forward later in the processes. And then the final item is just working to identify some data, put some indicators out there, make a very public dashboard for folks to track how we make progress as we start working through implementation of the master plan. So we are recommending today that you confirm, or if desired, to modify that proposed update order. We do have a motion for you in the staff report. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see Commissioner Andriola is signing in to speak. Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Ms. Mullen, for the presentation. Can you go back to the priority list again? I'm just curious, on the public noticing, well, let's do it differently. How long do you think we might get to number five? And I know that's really almost a bit of an unfair question because there are a lot of factors with each one of those items that are above the one that you're proposing as an updated priority order. I'm just curious.
That is a very good question. There are a lot of different variables that will impact the answer to that. So I cannot guarantee when that will occur. But I can tell you, we are still continuing to do work on those affordable housing initiatives after the work that you'll be asked to, or the actions we'll be asked to take this week and next week. We do have at least a couple of other packages to get through the process. I will tell you that the Tahoe area plan itself is expected to run nine to 12 months. Part of that is just because of the added complexity from it being located in the Tahoe Basin and TRPA's hearing processes. The public noticing part, I would expect to take probably a good few months. But I will say that all of that could potentially also be implemented on what happens during upcoming budget process when we talk about resources to be able to apply to these efforts. So to some degree, I know that is a non-answer, but it's what I can give you at this time.
Thank you. I think it's a fair answer, and I don't want to have you feel like I'm putting you on the spot. But I do think, just for full transparency again, that we have an upcoming legislature that is going to be in session in February. I think that there are some things that may also be a factor that possibly could impact that as well. So in those discussions with legislators, I'm just trying to gauge like what that would be. And I guess I'd ask for a clarification question. So if something did come up, for instance, that needed at least some input, we have a wonderful government liaison here who I think can help navigate that, and it wouldn't prevent the county from at least helping to address whatever that impact is. I just wanted to make sure that that is correct on my part to understand.
Certainly, through that four-month process, February to June, when legislation is in session, and there's a lot of good structure, a lot of folks who are involved in that process, and taking a look at the bills that are coming down the pipeline, doing an assessment, getting comments back to the Government Affairs Manager, making sure that that's communicated, taken into consideration during the process. So yeah, we'll just see what comes down the pipeline. There could be things that could potentially impact when we do make some co-changes, like you said, related to equine businesses.
Well, I would also like to say the fact that when you got to Item Five, the mic actually increased emphatically, may be an indication of how important it is to the community not to diminish the importance of all the other factors. But I do want to take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Mullen and the entire team for all of your hard work and dedication, and to the patience that I'd like to extend to the equine community and business community, understanding that sometimes things seem that they can be adjusted quickly, but there is a process. And so I really want to extend my deepest gratitude on behalf of everyone for the hard work and the dedication. And yeah, if I could have controlled the mic and have it go to number one, I'm sure that no one would be surprised. I'd like that to be the case. But given the fact that you have spent a lot of time on where you feel as staff this can be rolled out, I do appreciate it moving up. So thank you.
And Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Clark?
No, thank you.
Okay. And on the budget, I know we're going to talk about this in the next few months, but is it, have we ever gone out with a consultant to help us with some of these amendments? Or is it purely a practice of doing it internally? Because I know that there's not an appetite to hire new staff, even though I would love to give you so many planners, including a Tahoe planner, as you know. But I understand that, the budget constraints. And I'm just curious, are you, have you plugged into your request consultants that perhaps could kind of help us move up? Because it sounds like the equine businesses won't.
Please, so you know, some of that groundwork that has been done already was made possible because of those district funds that were used to be able to hire consultants to do some of that, that initial outreach and the research. A very important groundwork that we would have to do anyway for a code amendment. And I will say too, that you know, an enormous part of even the master plan creation and all of that outreach that we were doing with the community, that was very much a partnership with a consultant to be able to get that work done and go through the process. So that is absolutely a piece that we will be looking at as well.
Okay, great. So the board can look at that as additional resources, potentially for this department, CSD, and Commissioner Clark is signing in.
Thank you. Now I do have a question about, specifically about equine businesses. It's going to be a time before we get to those folks, right? A year-ish, two years? When, how long do you think before? I know you just answered that question. And so that's just teeing it up for, is it impacting anybody now? Is anybody having financial hardships now because they can't get their business license? Are you aggressively in forcing these business licenses? Are you turning the other way and letting people do what they're doing until we get around to it? So is it impacting anybody financially at this point in time?
So a couple of things I want to mention related to that. For those folks who have received a notice that they do need to come into compliance, get the appropriate permits and whatnot, to make sure that their equine business is appropriately permitted. On the enforcement side, we absolutely try to work with those folks who are impacted to be as flexible as possible, as long as they are making some level of progress. That is positive. That is what we want to see. That is what we aim for. You know, our goal is not to be punitive. It is just to bring folks into compliance. We have seen some of the folks who have gone through the process, gotten permitted, whatnot. There are some who have reached out to us that had some concerns about some of the technical requirements, where we have had additional conversations, helped to, or worked to facilitate conversations with other agencies as well. So it's kind of a, it is kind of a mix. But my understanding, just on brief conversations with the, with our enforcement team, is that we have, we have folks at different stages through the process. But again, our goal is always to help them through that process, not be punitive.
So a follow-up question. Is anybody currently being fined? Is anybody currently being sanctioned in any other way? One person, five people, 50 people? What kind of numbers do we have out there? I know you're trying to work with everybody. Is there any just flagrant violations of whatever that can't conduct business until further notice?
That is a, that is a good question. I apologize, I will need to follow up with you on so I can talk with the enforcement team and get statuses to you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other board comments? Yes, Vice Chair Herman?
So, on the equine thing. I've been in that business for many, 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 many years. Since I was a teenager, and that was a long time ago. And I've been here for 40-some years. And I can't figure out when all these rules that you have now came about without some kind of big change. And I never saw that in the last 10 years. So I just wonder where all these rules came from, like paving, paving half of properties and that sort of thing. I mean, these are kind of ridiculous rules that they've come up with. And because you've put business on it, it seems like it's, you know, you've tied business with, you've tied, you know, rural with, you know, in town. You know, and the rural is a lot different than what it is in town. So I don't know how you've combined that without a lack of fairness to the horse owners. Because what you call a horse business, there may never be a profit in a horse business. I mean, it's, it's, can be very lucrative if you work it right. But most of the time, it's the love of horses that brought you into that business. And I just don't see how the rules that you're going by right now or where they came from. So that's, I need that first, and then, and how they came about without us voting on it in the last 10 years. Because it didn't change before I got to be a Commissioner.
Great question. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to provide a little bit more context there. So any, any rules that we are enforcing? If it is in the Development Code, in order for it to get put in the Development Code, it would have had to go through that process, going through Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners for adoption. But I will say that, and you know, and to my knowledge, there have not been significant changes in those codes in the last several years. The majority of, outside of the Warm Springs area, the majority of, you know, commercial stables, riding facilities, things like that, would require some sort of a special use permit. So that's a process where it would go before the Board of Adjustment. But you know, it could be, from what you may have heard from some constituents, is also related to requirements coming from some of our partner agencies. So we certainly work with, you know, Northern Nevada Public Health District. We work with NDEP, with State Water, things like that, where they have requirements as well, all of those partner agencies. And that is a piece of, you know, some of what we heard from the public input process when we were soliciting input was comments about those other requirements as well. Now, at the end of the day, what we can control will be what's within our codes. But certainly, having some conversations with some of those partner agencies, that is part of what we intend to do as part of the process as well.
I would like you to start looking at a way, during this coming year, to moderate some of this that seems so harsh. And, you know, the county has administrative rules. And like I say, I would like to see where all these came about. But I kind of think that maybe in your departments, you've come up with these things of, way of combining things, this business thing, in a way that's detrimental to them. So I'd like you to look into that seriously. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I follow up? I think, thank you, Ms. Mullen, for trying to really share the complexity of how these all came into be. The fact is, is that one of the simplest ways, from my perspective, and I've spent a lot of time on this, is that the designation of making them commercial triggers everything. If we were to strip this down, oh, I have a equine business owner shaking her head in the audience. That really is, in my opinion, a very core piece of this. However, it isn't within only Washoe County's purview to make those changes. Some of those changes, this is where, at the legislature, there's a common phrase. It's called, well, there's several. One is unintended consequences or unfunded mandates. This, I think, is a result of years and years and years of a combination of things happening without any particular intentional infraction against an equine business. I think it's just a combination. It's very, it's very complex. But the simplicity is really looking at lifting the possibility of having it not necessarily trigger commercial is a big thing. But when you start unwinding that, it's not so easy. And so I think, again, I want to continue to give accolades to staff. It's not, it's complex. But at the same time, if we're hurting people to, that is the biggest impact. And knowing that those unintended consequences are directly impacting a business that really, I mean, there's a common saying within the equine industry, and that is, if you really, really, you know, want to find somebody who has zero discretionary income, zero, find out who owns a horse. And you will find zero discretionary income. So I don't think it's intended to be a penalty. I think it's a combination of state, local, partner agencies that have put some things into place, and no one's really looked at it. So again, thank you for looking at it. I mean, I hope that we don't have to wait a year, but I know that the legislature may help with some things as well in those discussions that I'm having. So thank, thank you for, I hope, Commissioner Herman, that might help a little bit in understanding the complexity. It wasn't Washoe County per se that put this into place. It's a combination of various variables. Thank you.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there's a couple of us sitting up here who own horses, who've owned horses our most of our lives. We understand how that works. So from my perspective, when I see people regulating, and I've got to agree with Commissioner Andriola, when you put the word "business" on there, that's when it changes the whole complexion. But when you get people who are not horse people trying to tell horse people how to manage their horse operation, that's where you run into a lot of problems. I mean, it'd be like me trying to regulate people that own airplanes. You know, forget about it. They'd all be crashing. There would, there'd be no reason to fly an airplane if I was in charge of regulating airplanes. But I know what I'm doing around horses and cows and other livestock. And most people who do that have a certain amount of knowledge already. So those folks should be encouraged, even if it's the 4-H leader. Somebody who actually knows something about livestock should be involved in making the regulations. It just doesn't make sense to have somebody who's not a subject matter expert or a subject matter, not even an expert, just somebody who's aware of the subject matter being involved. So that's part of the process. People have been living around horses for thousands of years. They know what they're doing, or they soon fall off and go somewhere else. But at the end of the day, have a good idea of what they're doing. And for some city slicker to show up and tell them how to do something, it doesn't always, it isn't always right. And it isn't, it isn't the fault of the person making the rules. They just aren't aware of what needs to be done. So just my comments. Thank you.
Great discussion. Any other board comments or questions for Ms. Mullen? I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk, I see there's some public comment.
We do. First up, we have Catherine Yarte.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Yarte, and I own and operate Team Yarte Horsemanship with my husband, Daniel. Team Yarte Horsemanship is a state-licensed boarding and training business that has been in operation since 2016, and we have been navigating Washoe County licensing processes since August of 2023. I would first like to thank the board and staff for their efforts in addressing this issue with the current codes as they apply to equine businesses. Specifically, I would like to thank Commissioner Andriola for allocating funds towards researching and addressing these issues, and for including Washoe County horse owners in the process through the surveys and workshops. As an equine business owner in Washoe County, I would like to voice my full support for As an equine business owner in Washoe County, I would like to voice my full support for staff's recommendation for reprioritizing permitting requirements to number five on the list. We're eager to continue this conversation and ensure our small businesses can thrive and continue the rich tradition of Nevada equestrian heritage. Addressing the codes will make, to make them more feasible for small equine business, will ensure compliance moving forward. And based on this discussion, I'd also like to add, I know there's a lot, I've learned a lot about how much we interact with other departments, and there's a lot of pressure on like, well, state requires this, and this department requires that. I've been in regular conversation with NDEP, and they have pushed back, saying that it is entirely the county that is causing us to have to do the bathroom. So that's our biggest issue at this stage, is having to have a permanently built restroom facility with a commercial septic system on our private property that is a residential property. That is our number one hangup right now that we're working through. I'm super grateful to Ms. Mullen, who has been wonderful to communicate with and following up on everything we've presented. As I said, NDEP has said that they would happily classify us as a home-based business and permit our existing facilities as they are, based on the size of our business. I would like to suggest, if it's going to be a year before we can change code, that we consider, based on size, that some of us who are, in our case, we have five visitors per week, per our SUP, and at that stage, we're taxed as a home-based business, we're licensed, but we can't be licensed as a home-based business. And that is where the discrepancy happens. Because we're designated commercial by code, we can't use home-based business to authorize, like, our bathroom and that sort of thing. Even if we offer portable restroom facilities, which we do, that still doesn't count towards the code. So those are the things that are really the struggle for us as small business owners. We have very minimal impact on traffic. We have very minimal impact on our neighbors, who have all voiced adamant support for us. And so we would just ask that some consideration be given to potentially waivers for our smaller facilities that have been at this for over a year, that maybe we could look at a home-based business option until the codes can be written to address all equestrian facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so I look to the rest of the board. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Andriola?
No questions.
Okay. With that, we've taken public comment. Ms. Mullen is looking for confirmation of the recommendation she put before us and looking for a motion.
I'll move to conform with the list that was provided by Ms. Mullen during this presentation for the proposed prioritization of the initial actions to be implemented, the envisioned Washoe 2040 master plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Any questions on that motion from the board? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We are now moving into our public hearing portion of the meeting. We will now move into item 15. Is this yours, Manager Brown, or Madam Clerk's? Sorry.
line transversing west across APN 079-150-58, connecting the new substation on APN 079-150-19
Manager Brown.
All right. Item 15 is a public hearing, subject to a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. Recommendation to approve a resolution initiating an amendment to the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional to the Olinghaus substation on APN 079-150-59, which is the Dodge Flat Solar Tube. Plan Map Three, regional utility corridors and sites to include a 200-megawatt solar energy center containing plus or minus 1.57 contiguous acre solar field, 200-megawatt Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Brown. I am looking to the board to see if the board needs a staff report on this.
solar energy storage system, and new substation on APNs 079-150-21, 079-150-20, 079-150-19, 079-150.17,
I'm not seeing, okay, great. Moving this along, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay. We, any other board comments or questions on this item? I'm not seeing that there is any, so, and we've taken public comment. I am looking for a motion at this point. Commissioner Andriola?
Madam Chair. I'll move to approve as stated in the report.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Moving right along, we'll go to our second public hearing, item 16. This is the second reading, and we'll toss it over to Madam Clerk.
This will be ordinance number 1733, and ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110 Development Code, Article 310, temporary uses and structures to modify the administrative permit application requirements to occupy a travel trailer or recreational vehicle when necessary, when necessary to temporarily care for the infirm, specifically by allowing nurse practitioners and physician's assistants, in addition to physicians, to sign the required affidavit identifying both the internal, both the initial and subsequent annual need for on-premises care. And all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto, it was formerly Bill Number 1923.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is our second reading. Do board members wish to see a staff report on this item? I'm not seeing that anyone does. This is a public hearing. I'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk?
No comments.
Okay, we have no public comments, so if there's no other discussion or comments from the board, I am looking for a motion on the second reading.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve ordinance 1733 as written in the staff report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Andriola, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Moving right along, we'll go to our second public hearing, item 16. This is the second reading, and we'll toss it over to Madam Clerk.
This will be ordinance number 1733, and ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter 110 Development Code, Article 310, temporary uses and structures to modify the administrative permit application requirements to occupy a travel trailer or recreational vehicle when necessarily, when necessary to temporarily care for the infirm, specifically by allowing nurse practitioners and physician's assistants, in addition to physicians, to sign the required affidavit identifying both the internal, both the initial and subsequent annual need for on-premises care. And all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto, it was formerly Bill Number 1923.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is our second reading. Do board members wish to see a staff report on this item? I'm not seeing that anyone does. This is a public hearing. I'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk?
No comments.
Okay, we have no public comments, so if there's no other discussion or comments from the board, I am looking for a motion on the second reading.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve ordinance 1733 as written in the staff report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Andriola, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. We are now moving into item 17, our final public comment. Manager Brown?
Item 17, public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are to be made to the commission as a whole. A speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech, irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others, examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. All comments are to be directed to the commission as a whole, and the Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of the, of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person be removed if the person conducts, person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of a public meeting are criminal acts as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much, Manager Brown. Madam Clerk?
Roger Edwards.
Roger Edwards for the record. Please enter my comments into the permanent record. I'm back because in the first three minutes, I didn't have time to talk about my water recharge bill. And I'm internationally known for that, so I have to come back up now and talk about it. Seventeen years, the system has been shut down. I'm still getting the bill. Do I have to say anymore? I mean, is that, doesn't that cover it? Seventeen years. Anyway, I wish we could do something about that, please. All right, is there really need for three sheriff's deputies in this building during this meeting? Are you guys so threatened by this big, ugly, old retired guy that you have to have three sheriffs in here, plus the regular security folks? Come on. All right, I wish you guys would quit praising Duane Smith. He was a guy individually solely in charge of our water recharge program. And for years and years, I mean, years and years, like four or maybe five, he was solely in charge of us still paying a bill monthly for services we weren't getting. Quit praising him. I hope it shows up on his evaluations. He screwed the 600 homeowners in Golden Valley out of $22 a month for a water recharge that he knew was not flowing, solely responsible for us having over a quarter of a million dollars in our fund because we paid for something we weren't getting, and there was no charges for it for so many years that we rolled up that kind of money. So that's Duane Smith. Put that on the record. I want all my comments on the record, please. He was solely responsible for screwing 600 homeowners out of that money, knowing that the county was not providing any services to us. You know, when I, when I, when you guys finally take that, I think it's up to $400 now out of my property taxes or wherever you're going to do it, I'm going to file. I have an attorney all lined up. We're going to go after you guys. And I'm, you know, Commissioner Clark was, you know, so involved with Incline Village, he's going to know what goes on with charging county residents for something they don't get. Okay? Our groundwater now is so high, we need to pump it out of the ground. The groundwater's at five feet. We're recharging too much naturally. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you very much. We'll now move into item 18. Manager Brown?
Item 18 is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you. Do you have anything for us, Manager Brown?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, Vice Chair Herman?
Okay, I'd just like to make a request that maybe by our meeting on the 17th or before, that we have an answer to, are we going to vote on our new ROV that was voted on? So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'd like to request, especially given the prioritization of projects, and then the dedication where it's been clear that the body has given support for staff to look at housing and ordinances, that they actually include looking at, really, the clarification that's needed with the dark sky ordinance under Article 14, noise and lighting. Just really recommend that staff look at strengthening that as they move through the process with all these other ordinances. So I would ask that that be considered as they're moving through with staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for asking Mr. Edwards to come back in. Mr. Edwards is bringing, bringing this to our attention for two years that I know of. It's been going on forever. I saw a new level of anger today from, from Mr. Edwards. What exactly is it going to take this county to stop sending him a bill and, and continuing to rub a sore subject and continuing to chafe this man? What is it going to take? Can we get this on the agenda for him? Not only him, but the other folks in his neighborhood were paying for something they didn't receive? Hundreds of thousands of dollars. He's not asking for a refund. He just wants you to leave him alone. When the heck are we going to be able to accommodate this person? Can we get this on the, I'd like to request this be on agenda, to get this put to bed once and for all. He's tired of talking about it. I'm tired of hearing about it. When can we fix this? It's a simple request. This poor man has been out here for at least two years now, and God knows how much before that, two years that I've been here, and I've been hearing about this, and it's just every month, the county just needles him. Every month, the county wastes taxpayer dollars buying a stamp, printing paper, wasting paper, you know? We're always worried about, you know, resources and wasting, wasting fuel and wasting paper and wasting, and irritating the citizen. How do we get this fixed? Are we that hampered or hindered that we can't fix this problem? This is an easy fix, and, and, and there shouldn't be any reason for this. He's not looking for an apology. He's not looking for a refund. Just leave him alone. Can we get to that? Thank you.
Any other board announcements? Okay, with that, thank you for a wonderful meeting. It is 1:27, and we are adjourned.